Chat function has been disabled to ensure that the public can see all portions of the meeting. The city clerk is the host of the meeting and I R I T director will be the co-host. For tonight's study session, council members and panelists will be able to unmute themselves when recognized. Please mute yourself when you have finished speaking to prevent disruptions at this time. Call the meeting to order and invite economic director Michelle Claymore to introduce Katie Press. Mayor, I don't see Michelle online yet, so.
No, I'm here, I'm here.
Okay, alright.
Yeah, we're just trying to get Katie set up, but I think we're good to go, so I'll go ahead and introduce her. I can't get my camera quite right, so I apologize. So, good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem and City Council members. Last February, Commerce City hired KP Consulting and Associates to assist with the city's retail attraction efforts. Katie is the founder and principal of this company. Ms. Press has been in the retail real estate business for thirty-five years. Over the last twenty years, she has performed consulting work for many of the municipalities within the Metro Denver area. Prior to consulting, Ms. Press worked within the commercial development industry, including as Vice President for Catellus Commercial Group, Real Estate Manager for Safeway Stores, and a Real Estate Representative for Seven-Eleven. As part of your City Council packet, Ms. Press provided City Council with an in-depth reference guide on the retail industry and how retailers make location decisions. During tonight's study session, she will share highlights from this document and answer any question council members may have. Ms. Press, I'd like to turn it over to you at this time.
Good evening. I'm gonna be honest, this is my first Zoom hearing. So, I'll make my way through it and hopefully we're able to connect and it all seems to make some sort of sense. I'm usually used to doing this in person, as I'm sure all of us are, right? Dylan, are you gonna start this slideshow for me? Thanks. Great. So, who am I? Michelle, Michelle gave you kind of a quick synopsis of my background, but I always like to let everybody know who I am, so you can understand where my perspective and my opinions come from. My name is Katie Press. I've been in the retailing industry for over thirty-five years. As Michelle told you, I have quite a unique background in the sense that I started my career as first a retailer, working for first as a Seven-Eleven, a real estate manager, which was a really good learning ground. You haven't lived until, you know, you've been up in front of neighborhood groups and city councils trying to sell the idea of a convenience store that at that time sold liquor, gas. We also were the nation's largest purveyor because we, pornography, because we sold Penthouse and Playboy magazine. And because we were also the nation's largest purveyor of drug paraphernalia, because we sold zigzag rolling papers. So, it was a great training ground for me in terms of learning the retailing industry. I then transitioned and went to work for Safeway Stores, where I was a real estate manager for them and spent ten years self-developing our own grocery anchored shopping centers across the metropolitan area. So, during my tenure with them, I developed just under twenty-five shopping center developments for them. That experience was attractive to the development community and I transitioned out into becoming a developer for Catellus Commercial Group. Catellus is now part of Pro Lodges, but at that time, we were a multifaceted development firm that specialized in all aspects of development across the United States. And my job was to procure and initiate a retail development program for them across the western half of the United States. When they became more focused on office and industrial development, they let go their retail development arm and that went away. And I was encouraged by a lot of guys that I had worked with in the private sector to start a consulting practice that, having been both a retailer and developer, provided an interesting background that they thought would be beneficial on the street. And I've been consulting for a little, little under eighteen years at this point. And primarily, the first half of that was almost entirely in the private sector. That consulting practice has expanded in the last decade to include municipalities who really wanted to understand how to be more relevant in the retailing arena. It's a bit like letting the fox into the hen house. And, and so that's a, that's a job that I do perform in differing factors for a number of municipalities. First and foremost, I'm a practitioner, I'm not an academic. I don't profess to be an academic. I understand retailing from all aspects and I understand how to make it happen, but I'm not an academic in that perspective. And so, if you've had a chance to read through an inside look at retail, you'll understand that that's written more from somebody who is a practitioner, not somebody who's trying to necessarily, in the sense that I've done this and been part of this. And, you know, I know what it's like to have the CEO of Safeway sitting in my car while we're making real estate decisions. And that's different than approaching it from a lot of other retail recruiting type of entities who come at it from a different perspective. I have in-depth knowledge of economic realities and, and retail development. I understand why some projects get off the ground and some don't. And, and that's a really important aspect when we talk about recruiting retail. Understand why retailers make certain decisions. You'll find as we go through this conversation that retailers are very unique to themselves. They all might sit within a certain classification of retail, but at the end of the day, they're very unique in how each individual looks at what their, their actual target locations are and their target customer bases. And there may be similarities, but it's important to understand that each of them are very unique. And understanding why they're unique and why they make certain decisions is very helpful of getting to the understanding of what their movements are gonna be. And having consulted for as long as I have and worked on both sides of the table, I have the ability to extend that knowledge and experience to, to you and to the, and to staff and to the municipality as a whole. Next, Dylan. So, the scope of work is, is broken down into three different categories. Step one was learning about retail, that's what we're doing right now. We've actually hoped to be in front of the council earlier in April and COVID-19 didn't help us participate in that timing. And so, that's why we're, we're late in bringing this to the table, but we, you know, there were other issues or other fish to fry, which is why we're now just bringing step one to in front of the council. So, that's what we're gonna spend our time on tonight and talking about, you know, the education of, of understanding about retailing. Step two is a citywide retail review, and that's really dialing down further into the aspects specific to Commerce City and understanding how that pertains to the retail opportunities within the city. And step three is taking what we've learned in the citywide retail review and really initiating what I call the chase or implementation, which is really where you're starting to reach out and talk specifically to the retailers that you think have the best chance of, of wanting to be interested in Commerce City. Next. So, step one, everybody comes, why do I need to know this? Why, why do I need to understand about retail? And really, this is laying the groundwork, you know, for all of us collectively to make good decisions and have an, we need to have an understanding of retail. So, you know, an inside look of retail really provides an in-depth understanding of retailing concepts, trade area dynamics, and then trends that are affecting the entire retailing industry. It's really a necessary step, it's one I make all of my municipalities do that I work with. You know, as we talk going forward from here, from this point forward, as we start delving into aspects that are specific to Commerce City, understanding of your own community and where you can be effective. Next. This is, and this is kind of interesting to me because I get this all the time. Look, everyone shops and we all have personal opinions about retailers, but that doesn't make us retail experts. Because we individually have a particular shopping pattern or like or dislike for a certain type of retailer or retailing component, that does not necessarily translate into the broader retailing aspects. We really have to put aside our own preconceived beliefs based on our own personal habits. And listen, I get that from my friends, I get that from my families. I, you know, I had my daughter tell me the other day that she knew where King Supers was going in Thornton and she could not have been more wrong. And I finally looked her and I said, who do you think actually knows? So, you know, there, there is this kind of perspective that because we are in, we have some personal relationship with retailing, that we can extrapolate our own personal preferences to actually how the industry functions. We have to put that aside, because many times, we, we may not be representative of what that retailer or retailing sector sees as being primary to them. Retail site selection is comprised of many factors. It's not just one factor. And each factor is important when making decisions on potential markets and sites. If you put, you know, Walmart and Target side by side, I'm going to tell you, they have very different lists about how, what they look at and what they perceive as being market opportunities for them. And, and those factors can be fifteen, you know, fifteen issues long as they're looking at how they make a decision about where they're gonna go. The more you understand what those factors are, the more you're able to assess and present viable opportunities to appropriate retailing contact. I will tell you, when you pick up the phone and you call a retailer, you see a retailer in person, although not now in the current situation, but if you pick up the phone and you call a retailer or retailer's representative, the first question they're gonna ask you is, well, where is it you think I should go? And so, you have to have an understanding of what that particular retailer really looks for and, and what they value in terms of site selection, so that you can present the best opportunities for them. Not all opportunities, the best opportunities for them. So, attaining actual knowledge about retailing is a primary tool of economic development. Unrealistic expectations based on a lack of retailing knowledge frankly is alienating to us in the retailing community. You know, and I'll be honest with you, to any city council, any mayor, you know, my industry will be extremely polite and extremely professional to you. And, but, you know, they'll actually dismiss you at some point if they don't think you have realistic expectations about what your community can support where, and have a, have a story about where your community is going and where the, and where you have opportunities that are actually relevant to them. Next. So, taking the time. So, I know, and so what we're, we're really asking for is for you guys to take the time to become more educated in retailing, to be a better partner to the private sector. And, and that is a really key cornerstone of retailing economic development and in terms of recruitment and retention. Next. So, how do retailers make location decisions? And Michelle actually brought up an interesting point to me when I put this together. Was it, in, in the private sector retailing world, we deal mostly with national retailers. Independent retailers are just that, they're independent. And it's really hard for you to go out and categorize or characterize a retailing concept or a retailer, or an individual independent retailer who is not conceptualized yet. You know, for somebody who thinks that they may want to start a particular type of retailing store, a restaurant, a small-scale independent retailing concept, there's no place to go find them. And so, you know, it, it becomes difficult to create a, a list of how they will make a decision. They tend to be, independent retailers tend to be responsive to an opportunity that is already existing, where national chain retailers will actually come to the table before that opportunity actually exists. And, and I'm happy to answer a lot of questions about that. It's a concept that, that needs a little more delving into. And frankly, I hadn't put the presentation together based on independent retailers, but I'm happy to spend some time in the questions section to talk about them. But as we talk about these slides, it's gonna relate to how national chain retailers make location decisions. So, retailing is far more defined than consumers perceive, and we talked about that before. And many factors that go into an individual retailer's decision-making as it comes to site selection. Retailers generally stay within the concept that best delivers their target customer to them. As you read through an inside look at retail, you're going to see the, the primary categories for retailing in terms of scale. For example, Walmart's gonna be in what we call a sub-regional category, because in order for them to do the sales volumes that they need to be profitable with any kind of a supercenter, they need to have a larger residential base than say, King Supers does. And so, King Supers falls even, even at a hundred and twenty-three thousand square feet, they fall into a neighborhood community oriented type of, of scale where Walmart falls into a sub-regional. So, again, retailers were going to stay within those genres. And what you'll find as you read through that, that information is you'll see where people kind of plug into and what their, what their trade area characteristics are. Each retailer, no matter how big or small, have different criteria based on who they think their customer base is. And, and each retailer has an idea of who they think their customer base is. Some are far more defined, say Whole Foods, Trader Joe's. Some are not defined. It'd be interesting to understand that, you know, grocery stores don't really define who their customer base is, because in their mind, it's a numbers count, because everybody eats food. And so, from their perspective, they're looking at just pure population numbers, where somebody like Whole Foods doesn't prescribe to that. They actually believe that they need a particular customer with a particular economic background in order for them to sustain their, their stores. So, each is unique in how they make these location decisions. Next. This is kind of one of the big misconceptions, and that is that there was, is that retailers care about particular markets. To some degree, that's true, and it used to be a lot truer prior to the recession of two thousand eight. Prior to two thousand eight, retailers really did move their capital based on regionality. So, they looked at particular regions that they operated in. They would allocate a certain amount of money to that region. Those real estate professionals were responsible for executing a certain number of stores within that region. What happened after the recession is most of the regionality got, got wiped away and retailers started making decisions on a national basis. So, when we were back in the regional days, a site would compete with only the other sites in Colorado. If you, if you were talking to Walmart or you were talking to Target and Target had allocated five stores for the Colorado marketplace, you only competed within the state of Colorado for those five locations. What has happened now is that you'll see Walmart or you'll see Target, you'll even see Starbucks, it goes all the way down. They'll look at Home Depot, that's a really good example. They'll, they'll look at, they're gonna do eight stores across the country now, and they're gonna do the top eight. And if Colorado doesn't fit within the top eight, they don't care. They're just not gonna build those stores in Colorado. They're gonna build the best eight stores across the entire market that they operate in versus having any kind of particular allegiance to a particular region or a particular state. So, sites in Colorado compete with all other markets for that national retailer. So, you know, if you have a retailer that you can get interested in your city, you're competing with cities across the rest of the country to make sure that that stays in the top tier for the number of stores that they want to do in that particular time period. So, opportunities in Colorado may not be as desirable as those that exist in other markets based on economic sales projections and market growth. So, how that actually trickles down and means something to us is that we have to actually work harder than we ever did before to perfect an opportunity. It could be that we have to do, we have to minimize or eliminate entitlement issues. It could be financial incentives that put this deal in a, in a better economic light than other deals. But you, you'll find that when we get to opportunities that are a little bit larger in scale, you'll find that, you know, municipalities are playing a greater role to maintain some sort of desirability for this deal to get done. Next. There's not endless capital for expansion. You know, last year, Home Depot came back to, to doing deals after being absent from doing deals for quite some time and decided that they were gonna do eight deals across the entire United States. So, they, you know, they're, they tend to be anymore. Most of these guys really are pretty capital constrained. And that capital constraint actually is attributed more now as they shift money to trying to figure out how to increase their online presence and how to compete with impacts from online retailing. And that's a pretty common conversation with just about every retailer who has said, you know, rather than place capital into expansion mode, we're actually shifting those dollars into improving delivery, improving their online footprints. And it's not as simple as just, you know, popping up the website and saying, we'll now do online orders. There's a lot of things that go into that and a lot of infrastructure internally. And the places that companies have found the money to spend that have been on their expansion capital. So, we see much more limited expansion plans for almost all of the national chain retailers. Again, opportunities are prioritized with only the very top options being considered. And there's many factors unique to each retailer that go into limitation on capital and limits of expansion. Next. Pandemic. So, the major shifts in consumer, the major shifts in consumer behavior prior to the pandemic were already causing significant disruptions. I've had a lot of conversations about, within the industry. And, you know, the disruptions that we see in retailing right now were the same disruptions that were there before the pandemic. What's happened though is the pandemic has accelerated the disruptions. So, impacts that might have taken three to five years to shake out are now shaking out in three to five months. And so, I, you know, I don't think that we're seeing anything in retailing, and that includes the restaurant industry, that we didn't think were coming anyways. It was just that we had such a robust economy that it was hiding a lot of these stress fractures that were already there. And the pandemic pretty much stripped those away and made those stress fractures more visible and actually start to grow. And not all impacts were bad to the overall health of retailing. To be honest with you, there was a culling of the herd that needed to happen. We have some retailers, again, who were hanging on because of a more robust economy, even though they probably shouldn't have been. And I, you know, I shared with you, and if you've had a chance to read through the restaurant section, you know, we have prognosticators in the industry as much as a year ago at this time saying we were going to see some pretty impactful closures within the, the restaurant industry because we were just had too many restaurants per capita. The result of culling of that herd, you know, allows those retailers who are more financially better to, to withstand the pandemic, the, the retailers who are actually more responsive to consumers today have a better concept, a better delivery of that concept. It allows them to actually be more sustainable long-term. So, even though it's hard to look at sales tax generation numbers and see those going down, it's hard to see closures within the communities. Not all of those impact, not all of those impacts are really as bad. At least in our industry, we don't see those as being quite as negative as perhaps we do in the short term. Next. So, where are we moving to in step two? Step two is a citywide retail review. And again, you know, as, in order to be effective at recruiting and chasing retail is you have to understand your marketplace and you have to be educated about it. And, and you, not everything can go everywhere. So, we really have to understand what our opportunities are and what our challenges are as it relates to those opportunities and whether or not we have an opportunity to mitigate those challenges. So, you know, we're, we're going to be, end up making recommendations on specific development opportunity match and who goes where. And that's an important component, especially when we talk about the north. That's still a growth aspect for Commerce City. And what we have to know is do we have the opportunity to support in time larger scale retailing? And if we do, where does it wanna go? And based on that, are we willing to have the patience to allow it to materialize when we, market conditions will support it? And so, that's a really important piece of information as we start to go out to recruit, because we're starting to put specific sites on people's radar screen and we're bringing it into context and starting to tell a story about why this market's going to reach maturity to a point where these options are gonna become viable. And, and we have to have understood them and studied them in order to present those in the right light. It also helps us to identify where city involvements needed. Perhaps we have infrastructure issues that are preventing retail, that's a really common component. And it's one that municipalities don't always understand. A lot of these deals can't support extraordinary infrastructure costs. And so, do we need to, as a city, to be more involved in facilitating and eliminating some of these barriers to allow some of this larger scaling retail to come forward? Next. So, the chase, that's step three. So, step one is I'm educating. I'm, I'm bringing knowledge, inside knowledge to you, helping you become better partners for me, better decision makers, have a better understanding about retail and some of the idiosyncrasies that go along with retail. Step two, we're really delving into the site opportunities and the obstacles and opportunities that those site opportunities really present. And step three is we actually get busy and go out and start to chase. The deeper dive into, we're gonna do deeper dives into development opportunity matches. You know, how do you finally talk Walmart into moving forward? You know, and identifying those specific retailer matches. Who's most likely to succeed in terms of a development opportunity? And then we really start to chase down those retailers. And I, and I wanna be really clear, you know, the chase, the chase is not a short one with retailers. It can sometimes take a long time. I have another municipality that I work for and have worked for, for a number of years. And it's been a number one target for them to bring Trader Joe's. And I'm gonna tell you, it's taken me three years of conversations, begging, pleading, band-aiding and stapling it and gluing that thing together to finally get them to engage and come to the table. So, but, we've done it with the idea, we knew what the perfect target site was. We were able to be responsive in eliminating the hurdles. We were able to bring significant economic relief to some of those challenges and, and continue to remove obstacle after obstacle until they finally had no obstacles to prevent them from going forward. And so, that's what it takes to actually land retail in terms of, you know, when you finally start to chase and you have the right site and aspects to that, that's what it takes. And that's why you have to do step one and step two in order to be effective on step three. Next. Questions? So, I, I told Michelle I specifically wasn't gonna go into a lot of detail and present the, the actual material that I gave to you in your packets. I'm hoping you'll take some time with that, start to review it, understand it. But I'm happy to, to spend time answering questions, even generic as it pertains to retail and how that might pertain to Commerce City. And, you know, this is your, this is a good opportunity for, for you to ask questions of me and how, and we can start a dialogue and a conversation. Also helps me understand what you do understand about retail and where I might need to shore up in terms of an educational perspective.
Anyone on council have questions for Ms. Press?
Uh-oh, it's not good when we have no questions. Usually somebody wants to know something, like where's Costco going, right?
Councilor Hirst. Yeah, because there's not a full report like in front of us today. Can we discuss one of the key barriers to entry for Commerce City?
In the north, it's gonna be residential maturity. When we start talking about retailer scale, you know, you've had a lot of success. There's been a lot of work put in, a lot of success of bringing in what I call some basic level services. You've got, you've got a grocery store. You've got some restaurants that are starting to come in. But you haven't been able to get into the deeper levels of retailing, which is sub-regional and more regional and focused. And that's really usually a function of maturity. Just not enough people within the trade areas that they're trying to serve to support it. I've had a chance to start digging into, I started preliminarily studying, more than preliminary. I've started studying the north a lot more in depth. You have the capacity to get there, but we, we really have to dial down into figuring out where's the best place to put them? And then making sure you maintain the opportunity, because once we start talking about retailing of scale, you're not gonna get by with, with small sites, right? So, we've gotta marry up the concept or the ideas of where can they go? And do we have? And do we have the capacity to support them there? And then, then we have to actually do the things that we have to do to reach maturity. And, and listen, the one thing I'll tell you about retailing, we're last to the party, okay? The captain of the football team better be there, the prom queen better be there, the cheerleaders and the kegs got to be halfway through before retail starts to show up. We do not show up based on a good invitation. We, we have to see everything in motion and actually reaching some level of maturity for things before we start to show up. Can we put things on people's radar screen and have them start taking a look at it and start analyzing it? Yes. And a couple of things I've noticed about the north. I actually think the population numbers are better than my industry thinks they are. I certainly came into it with some kind of preconceived ideas based on what I thought I knew about Commerce City. And I'll be honest with you, I think things are better than I understood, which means that's better than what most of the retailing community has understood. So I think we have a chance to show how residential growth is going to materialize and in what format it's going to materialize and where the best options are for that, that larger scale retailing to start planting itself within, within the Commerce City North area. Old Town, I call it Old Town. I'm not sure if that's the right, the right name for it. If there's another name, please correct me or a better characterization of it. But, you know, the core city or the original city, they have different challenges than the north. You have some residential maturity. You also have residential maturity to the south of you to some degree with, with the neighborhoods that are in Denver and over to the east. I think it's just hard for retailers to really understand how to grasp it into that market. And, and I haven't got fully in depth with it to really understand the full challenges, but that would be what we'll talk about in, you know, mid September.
Thank you, and thank you for the presentation. I guess this is more towards a staff of the timeline of when we'll see the citywide review and then when we'll start talking about the chase.
So when we hired Katie in February, we were hoping that we would be a little bit further along. But as kind of COVID came in and staff was redirected towards helping small businesses and looking at some of the CARES Act dollars and where it could make most good, we decided to do this presentation in the middle of summer. And then, as Katie indicated, bring her back in early September to start talking about what she's discovered with that overview of the city. And, and this is also a good chance for us to kind of further see how retail is going to react given COVID. And as we start coming out of COVID, we'll be better positioned to have some great conversations with them.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Ellen Thomas.
Yes, thank you. That was something I will look forward to hearing more also as to why in September, you know, as to the south area Commerce City or the Commerce, you know, the core city areas, why you find it difficult to attract more retailers. You know, that's a big concern of mine. And then I was just curious because we have over about $300 million in leakage that goes out to the city each year. So can you help us with that as far as, you know, what to do with that money as well?
You mean in terms of why the dollars actually leak out or whether you have the opportunity to recapture them?
Well, both, you know, come both, addressing both of those.
Well, you know, the challenge, especially in, in the core city, is everybody built around you, right? I mean, you know, there is retail of significance that sits, you know, especially over by City Hall, you know, you have North Fields that sits within, you know, the shadow of Commerce City and is of a scale that is able to attract the core of Commerce City. You have some of that factor up on the north, too. Prairie Center was like a stake in the heart in some ways because, you know, it was one, large enough. Two, it has no restrictive, you know, there's no restriction on competitive retailers in there. Most times when we start building large scale retailing, we restrict. So Target doesn't allow Walmart in, per se. Michael's doesn't allow Hobby Lobby in, right? Staples doesn't allow Office Depot in. Home Depot doesn't allow Lowe's in. The, the intriguing part about Prairie Center and what, what the developer did there was there's no restrictions. They allowed all of the competitive uses to exist with each other, which is why you have, you have Hobby Lobby and Michael's and you have, you know, Home Depot and Lowe's. And, and usually when you have that restrictive element in place, it sets up the dynamic for a secondary center to come in with all of those retailers who weren't allowed to go in the first center. If that makes some sense. And so the unique aspect of Prairie Center is it allowed everybody to go, which kind of sucked a lot of air out of any of the markets around it. And so, you know, it definitely hangs a shadow over the northern Commerce City in terms of how it leaks because that's where everybody goes to shop, right? You're able to capture back your grocery dollars. But if you were looking for something beyond grocery, it leaks out to the north and primarily to Prairie Center. The north has the ability to grow and create its own trade area separate from Prairie Center. And that's why we talk about that residential growth component being really important because any of the retailers that are sitting up there in Prairie Center already know they own you. And so what we have to do is grow in big enough to support secondary stores to those initial stores that are in Prairie Center. Same is true in the, in the, in the original core or the original part of the city in the sense that you have Stapleton and you have North Fields that are sitting in the shadow of Commerce City. And, and they're just too convenient, to be honest with you. Which makes them very adept at, at taking sales out of Commerce City. So the north will have a different solution than the south. And to be honest with you, the south presents, I think, a bigger challenge because we're pretty much concentrated in, in our residential growth. There isn't, you know, huge numbers to be had in the future going forward. So it may be just having a more realistic understanding about what can happen in the core and how we can maximize what that opportunity is. I'm not sure that answered your question. If it did, let me know.
It did, but I was just curious. So do you have some ideas how you can help us in both, both the north and the south?
Yeah, the north, we got to grow. And in the south, we've got to figure out some way to coalesce the, we got to, you have to coalesce the trade area in the south. I, I will tell you as having been a retailer, you know, if you talk to King Supers about that store on the south, you know, it's a challenge to coalesce the trade area, right? It's hard to get everybody to shop it and not leave the trade area. And, and I don't know yet, that's part of what I, that's part of what my job is as part of the citywide review is to really help understand how do we create, in essence, some sort of opportunity to coalesce the south, the southern portion of the city from a retailing perspective? I can tell you retailers are confounded by it. Because, you know, on one hand, you have things over by City Hall and we have things over by Highway 85. We have this industrial influence and, and it's hard for them to make heads or tails out of it. And it's my job to help you understand how to make heads or tails out of it. All right, thank you.
Councilwoman Noble.
Thanks very much for your presentation. I want to piggyback on Councilmember Hurst's questions about, question about barriers and dig deeper into your comments regarding impressions of the retail industry regarding Commerce City. Could you talk about those and the good, the bad and the ugly?
You know, I, I, I think you're an enigma. A lot of people don't, a lot of, a lot of the retailing community doesn't quite understand the marketplace as a whole. You know, one of the things that's, that's confounding, I think, to, to the retail community is Rocky Mountain Arsenal, right? Does a great job of kind of dividing everything, which retailing hates. Retailing wants to be on the target. They want to be in the middle and they want to be able to pull from, from every direction. We call them legs. You want legs in, in all four directions that reach into the residential communities and can have the ability to bring consumers to your, your site, your shopping center, your store, your intersection, whatever it is. And it's hard, I find that it's hard to identify unequivocal main and main, right? And, and listen, I, I, you know, not to disparage my community too much, but we're not real, you know, we're very impressionable, just like a lot, a lot of industries probably are. And we don't necessarily think beyond main and main. Main and main's a really easy thing for a real estate person to figure out and present to their company and say, you know, we're going to be at the primary intersection for this trade area. And here we are on a map and look, I can bring all this residential support and this is going to be a no brainer for us. The challenge in retailing becomes when there's no real main and main. And you have to actually put more thought and, and creativity into the ability to sustain retailing than that. Since my community doesn't want to work that hard, it's going to be our job as a community to present our opportunities in a way that makes sense and, and has answered some of those more difficult questions for the community. So when I talk to the retailing community about Commerce City, a lot of the retailing community just doesn't get it. They don't know how to find main and main. And interestingly enough, and I, I know they're your neighboring community and there's probably some element of, of competition there. I get the same comment about Brighton. You know, everybody's like, I don't know where to go. Is it Highway 85 and Bromley? Or do I go to Prairie Center? Or do I just not go to Brighton at all, you know? And so I think, you know, if you, if, one of the reasons you have somebody who's a, who is an industry, you know, expert at the table to that degree is that we're going to try and create a different story to show, okay, yeah, you don't have main and main, but you have this. And this is the aspect about this that still works for you and why these locations can make some sense. And so that's the biggest obstacle, not the biggest obstacle. The biggest obstacle is still going to be residential growth in the north. But in this, in the southern part of the, part of the city and somewhat to the north, although I think you could argue that 104th and Tower is probably main and main or as close to main and main as you're going to get, is being able to tell that story of what main and main is and why these real estate decisions would make sense to them. If that makes some sense. And so I don't hear anybody say, oh, you know, it's not a nice enough city or, you know, it's, they're difficult to work with. I don't hear that in any capacity. What I hear is I don't know where to go. And so I think that's going to be something we actually have to answer for them. And, you know, a lot of, a lot of municipalities struggle to lead the conversation. And that's generally why I get brought in is because they want to be able to go out into the community, into the industry and talk about their community in a way that helps sell it. And, and, and listen, with retailing, you can't just say, aren't we wonderful? And we have this and we have that. You have to be specific about why this site works, why this site doesn't work. You know, why this opportunity is going to make sense for them. You have to be specific about what their opportunities are and how they can capitalize on it. The more you can direct that conversation and be good about it and knowledgeable about it, the more responsive they will be. In some ways, we're no different than a developer who's trying to attract somebody to a site. The better we're at that, the better the result's going to be.
I think it's always good to leverage the unique aspects of Commerce City, too, especially in, in the south, as you refer to it as Old Town or Core City. I think that is really a unique area that has just not gotten the attention that it deserves, whether it's artisans. We make space for artisans down there or, you know, put in trees that don't exist. Or, you know, something that makes it seem as small, make it seem small and unique and walkable and all that kind of stuff. And I don't know if that's part of your charge or if you're only national retailers, but I think that there are ways to, you know, look at different sections. Even if we don't have a main and main, there are other cities that don't have a, a center, if you will. Or the centers have moved because the downtown has died or whatever the case is. And so we just reinvent. You reinvent, you capitalize on all of the good things and go from there. I think that's worth looking at.
I know there's been efforts because I know in the past Dana Crawford's worked on Derby. I know there was one, a redeveloper who worked on, on the old dog racing track. And I mean, I, I know there's been efforts, you know, even Cronky's project around City Hall. I know that there, actually I worked with Cronky. I worked on their behalf as they, they tried to conceptualize that project. I'm not going to tell you that they actually did the best thing for the dirt there in some ways. I mean, some of the things that they thought that they could execute, they obviously haven't been able to execute. And perhaps, you know, I think it's now been eaten away with some different uses that kind of has limited some opportunity in terms of the soccer area. But, you know, it's, you know, it's probably not a simple solution, but you're absolutely right. I think there are some unique aspects to it. And I think that there are probably some building blocks and that's what we're going to identify. And then, you know, if it moves into something that's far more creative and unique and needs a lot more public-private partnership to execute, that's the conversation we're going to have.
Thank you.
Any other questions on this topic? Seeing done, we'll move on. Thank you very much Director Claymore and Ms. Press for your presentation. Look forward to the next one in September. Next on the agenda is the condition of turf in city parks. Will Willis Waterhouse please make the presentation?
Good evening. Can you guys hear me? Okay. Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. My name is Willis Waterhouse. I'm here as the Parks Manager, Parks and Streets Manager on behalf of the council request for an update on the parks' turf conditions. Do we have the presentation? Okay, this evening we'll talk about, again, the condition of turf in city parks. I have an update on conditions and some photos to share. Most of the presentation will focus on villages at Buffalo Run East Park. We'll talk about the deteriorating turf conditions from 2016 to 2019, the soil conditions that are underlying the issues there, the typical industry practices that we've used to address the conditions, the 2019 and 2020 remediation plans, and then the results and current conditions along with our ongoing remediation plans. Next slide. So initially, the beginning of this growing season, we had some staffing challenges due to the COVID-19 hiring freezes, which created some challenges for us getting irrigation systems up and fully operational. However, currently we have staffing levels that are conducive to allow us to resume our normal turf maintenance and irrigation practices. We have had some persistent hot and dry conditions that have created some challenges system wide on occasion. But currently, right now, our turf conditions throughout the park system and the building grounds facilities are in overall good condition. Next slide. Here we have a sampling of parks from the core area of the city. These are some of our larger parks down south. So you'll see Freedom Park, Pioneer Park, Fairfax Park and Monaco Park. These pictures were taken on 7/16 of 2020. You'll notice in the foreground of the Pioneer Park picture there is some native grass areas. So you can see the difference in there, but it's still a good thick stand of native grass there. Next slide, please. These are four parks of our larger parks up north. So you have Stampede Park, Turnberry Park, River Run Park and Frontier Park, also taken on 7/16 of 2020. And Frontier Park there has a sampling of the native grasses in the foreground as well. Next slide. So moving on to villages at Buffalo Run East Park. So this park was constructed in 2016. This aerial photo was taken in September of that year. And if you look at the play area there where the sod has been laid, you can still see the lines of sod after, shortly after it's been laid there. And if you look at the play area there where the sod has been laid, you can still see the lines of sod after, shortly after it's been laid there. So this was shortly after the sod had been laid and it's right at the culmination of the, of the parks construction. The native areas have potentially been seeded at this point, but have not been starting to grow in. Next slide. One year later, in October, October of 2017, you can see that the turf area has sustained itself for the most part. We have some areas north of the ball field and at the far north of the play area there that are showing some bare dirt areas that we were having challenges, experiencing challenges with. Some general thinning of the turf in some areas, but overall the native areas out there were alive and doing well, flourishing. Next slide. In June of 2018, we started seeing some underlying conditions really present themselves throughout the entire play area of that turf area and also within the native areas. If you see just north of the playground there in the native area. Next slide. And in 2019, this is the tail end of last year in September. We have some extreme challenges that are readily apparent throughout the entire play area and also in the native areas. Most of those areas there are, that are discolored in the turf area are either dying and stressed turf or are bare dirt areas. Next slide. So what's going on in villages of Buffalo Run East Park? We have some extreme sodic clay conditions that are extremely high in sodium content. The levels that are in this park's soil conditions right now are several times that of the upper limits that you would like to see for growing bluegrass sod. We do have similar conditions that exist in other areas up north, particularly Stampede Park, which is just across Chambers in the Villages of Buffalo Run West subdivision. Multiple areas out on the Buffalo Run Golf Course and also out in the Second Creek Open Space Area. If you've walked that trail out there, you may have noticed some areas that have white powdery substance on the top of the ground there. That's the, the calcium and the, and the sodium's coming up to the top of the surface there to be pushed through the sod or the, excuse me, the soil conditions out there. The Parks Division consulted with several agronomists, some soil experts and leading golf and horticulture industry consultants in our quest to try to tame the, the deteriorating conditions out there. And we did, we've done soil and irrigation water analysis on every year since the park was constructed. Just kind of tracking the trends and trying to evaluate where to go next. Next slide, please. So typical industry practices that we've implemented and have not redo, produce the desired results out there. Heavy aeration, top dressing, use of soil conditioners and surfactants that we've used on other properties, particularly at Buffalo, Buffalo Run West subdivision, just across the road, that did not produce results for us. We planted seed and sod with additional soil amendments. So that's more than just adding a little bit of soil amendments on top. We went in and did a full adding of soil amendments, tilling it down deep, redoing top soil and then adding turf or seed back in there without the desired results in, in our test plots. We added underground drainage infrastructure out there. So a number of French drains and leach fields. We, the clay conditions were so compact and hardpanned that we were having large bodies of water that were forming out there after rains or irrigation events. And we have been doing heightened irrigation system monitoring and modifications throughout the, this timeframe. Next slide. So the 2019, we developed our remediation plan that we were set forward on. And it's really centered around changing the soil profile and composition out there. So we were able to acquire a drill and fill machine. This machine has twenty-four drill bits that are over an inch wide. They go twelve inches deep down in the soil and they're every seven and a half inches on center in a big grid pattern. So that can quickly drill down, remove the soil out of those holes and then immediately fill them with sand. That will allow for water and air to permeate the soil, go down, move, and it reduces the compaction significantly. I will mention that that drill and fill machine was purchased primarily because of this park. However, it's been utilized extensively already on other facilities that we mentioned before, Buffalo Run Golf Course has used it in multiple areas. And we're using it throughout the rest of the park system. We also anticipate that as we develop additional parks up north, there will be a need for mitigating similar soil conditions throughout the area. Additionally, we've started on gypsum applications, multiple applications through last year's 2019. The plan was to get one and a half tons per acre down. Really that gypsum acts to go in and break up the, the clay conditions. I want no soil scientists, the cation exchange that is, that is, that we're looking for there will actually push the salt contents through the soil as it's breaking up the, the clay. And that allows the, the soil nutrients that are existing or the fertilizers and surfactants that we put down to be actually accessed by the, by the plant root structures. We utilize some soil conditioners in test, testing to try to offset some of the water deposits. Again, we're using the reclaimed water on the non-podable system from South Adams County Water. It does have higher levels of dissolved materials in there like salt and calcium than your drinking water would. So we're doing, adding a little bit of that back in with those water, every irrigation session that we have out there. And we investigated some water treatment systems, some injection pumps. Ultimately, we did not move forward with those at this point, but we've done some preliminary research on those as well. Next slide, please. So the 2020 remediation plan is essentially an extension of the 2019 efforts. We have drilled and filled fairly extensively this spring. We put down forty-two tons of dried sand and introduced that into the soil. Again, this is to reduce the compaction of the clay and allow water and oxygen to move through that soil more freely. We've put down gypsum applications. We're going monthly right now with a target of one ton per month being applied to that park. Again, that's to push the salt through the soil and allow nutrients to be delivered to the plant roots and have them be able to access those nutrients. And we've top dressed with forty-four tons of top dressing material. So the, based on our soil sampling, we've produced a, we've come up with an eighty percent organic material and twenty percent sand-based top dressing that we put down out there. Next slide. So re-seeding this year, before seeding this year, we consulted with two of our seed vendors. We provided both of them with all the soil reports and we've conducted site visits with each of them. Each vendor provided us with a recommendation for a high pH and alkalinity tolerant soil. These, both of these vendors though did stress that the best way for us to produce the desired results is to work on that soil profile change. So ultimately, we selected two blends of the pH and alkalinity tolerant seeds that were recommended to us. And we've overseeded turf grass areas in separate plots so we can test and just try to determine if one of those is going to do better than the other. Next slide. So far, we, we seeded, like I said, in, back in April. And initially, we had germination and growth within two weeks, which was pretty phenomenal, actually compared to what we had been experiencing the last few years before that. Of course, we did get some late freeze conditions that killed off some of our growth that was already showing. And it slowed and stunted the germination for the remainder of the seed. We did go ahead and reseed a few areas as needed in late May and early June. Next slide. So what we're seeing out there, we, we experienced a high rate of seed germination in areas. We're seeing complete leaf stages progress through into multiple leaf stages and actually start developing healthy root systems. The past few years, we would get a single grass blade, maybe a double or a triple glass blade before the plant would stall out. And we did, we didn't ever progress into getting into a healthy root structure. So this year we are seeing healthy root structures and additional seed heads coming off of the plant material itself and additional grass blade propagation. So it's filling in nicely out there. Additionally, we are seeing very minimal issues with standing water out there after any large rain events or heavy irrigation. And the, the minor issues that we are seeing resolve themselves typically within a matter of hours or, you know, half a day out there just by allowing it to drain into the soil. So the soil profile change and that, a drill and fill is, is showing some pretty phenomenal effects already. Next slide. So these are some pictures of the conditions. These were also taken on seven sixteen of 2020 this year, just a little over a week ago. This is in the southwest corner of the park. You can see that turf area there is looking pretty healthy. Next slide. Next slide, please. Oh, there you go. So this was taken from the same location, just looking east towards the ball field. This is the ball field area. Yeah, you can go ahead and move to the ball field. Next one. It's the ball field area. And again, you can see the turf area in there is fairly thick. If you recall the, the pictures on the aerial photo, there was a lot of the concentration of subpar conditions was focused around the lip of the ball field and that general area over there. Next slide. And this will be the basketball court area, which had some significant challenges as well. And this is current conditions. Next slide. The north edge of the park and turf areas, again over by the shelter and along the northern section of that play area. Next slide. And so this is the center of the park. This was really where we had the most issues with hardpanning, water collecting and sitting there for potentially weeks without, if we, if the Parks Division wouldn't have gone out and pumped it, we would have water that would sit there for weeks. We had the initial contractor replaced, sawed out there after the initial planting died. That held for a little while but died as well. And we've had very extreme challenges in this area, getting any kind of single stage or any kind of propagation of, of seed germination whatsoever. And you'll see it's filled in fairly nicely there, right where the kids are playing their game. Next slide. So the VBR E, ongoing remediation plans, we are planning to continue to follow the practices that have showed us good results so far in the turf areas. So again, those are drill and fill seasonally as necessary, planning to do that at least two to three times per season. We're doing monthly top dressing and gypsum applications, frequent aeration. So this year we're planning to, we have it scheduled to deep time monthly. We will continue to do soil sampling and that will dictate what type of fertilization we do. But we will do it spring, summer and fall for the turf areas. And we'll continue with our heightened irrigation system monitoring and tuning. Next slide. So we will also take those lessons learned and the applications for, that have shown us good results for the turf areas and apply those to the native areas. So right now, if you've visited the park, the native areas are not recovered to the same point as the turf areas are yet. Partly that's because we have not reseeded them this year in efforts to maximize the, the seed that's going down and make sure that we're, our efforts are, are proven out on the turf areas. So we will be drilling, filling those at the same time as the turf area. We will do monthly top dressing and gypsum applications at the same time as the turf areas. Aeration as needed, up to monthly with the deep time aerator. Soil sampling will continue out there. Fertilization of the native areas will occur in spring and fall. We typically would not fertilize in the summer because the, the native grasses aren't growing in those hot months. And heightened irrigation system monitoring and fine tuning out there as well. Next slide. So the native areas do have some good growth and some preliminary test plots that we have going out there. We've tried a couple of different things with a few different of our current seed blends that we have out there. However, to maximize, again, like I mentioned before, the efforts that we're doing, we are working with our seed vendors right now to produce some recommendations for the alkaline and pH tolerant blends of native turf that will have similar characteristics and aesthetics as our current blends of, of native grasses. And we plan to do aggressive reseeding this fall and the spring of 2021. Next slide. So with that, I'm open to questions if there are any.
Anyone on council have questions for staff regarding this topic? Councilwoman Noble?
Thank you very much for the report. You've certainly done a Herculean job at that park. That's quite a project you've taken on there. I'm curious about the costs of this ongoing project. And also whether there was interest, whether there was consideration, that is, of laying compost and re-grassing, if you will. And then the third question is that, or comment, is that Reunion has been having problems as well with the water having high pH level, almost at salty ocean level. And so they were cutting the water with something in order to make it less salty. Have we done anything regarding the water at this site in particular? I'm wondering if there's something about that area, Reunion and Buffalo Run and the Buffalo Run Golf Course are, somehow they're all getting the same water that's too salty. So it's salty water, compost and the costs of this annually.
So the annual cost, I don't have directly in front of me. I can definitely get some estimates back out for that. But we did do initial look at potentially coming in and, and stripping the entire site for, and, and doing additional amendments, soil amendments and just re-sodding. That cost is significantly higher than what our, our annual costs right now are going to be over the course of the next few years. The material that we're using, while it's not cheap, it's also, is pretty economical. And with, for the results that we're receiving, we're very pleased. So the, the drill and fill and the gypsum applications, the gypsum applications will be needed until the soil profile has changed. The drill and fill also is the way we're changing soil, the, the, the drill and fill machine is the way we're changing the soil profile right now. So I will need to continue to purchase the amendments and the sand until at some point we get to a stable soil profile condition out there. At that point then, we can really cease or at least diminish the, the amount of material that's being put down. So, and with the results we're seeing now, I don't really know exactly. I don't have a crystal ball. I can look into the future and say, you know, three more years and we're done. It's probably going to be a little longer than that, but with the, the cost of what we're doing, it would still, we project to be significantly cheaper than overhauling the entire park. When you talk about overhauling the entire park, you also have to do additional rework of the irrigation system and all those components in there that would have been disturbed and pulled back out. So it did shoot up pretty high there. Composting, so the industry standard is to put down three cubic yards per thousand square feet. Commerce City puts down five cubic yards per thousand square feet. So we did already compost or, or put down more amendments than the industry standard would be for, for parks development. And on top of that, right, we're adding eighty-twenty sand in. It's already forty some tons. You're looking at thirty, roughly thirty-four, thirty-five tons of, of organic material that's gone into that site already this year. And we'll put down probably that much more again in this fall applications. So we're getting lots of, of nutrients back into the soil and addressing the way they're actually going to be able to get to, deliver to the plants for use, which is a big thing. There are, there were nutrients in the soil in those first few years. Just the composition of the soil itself was not allowing them to be accessed by the, by the plant material. So that's really what we're looking with the gypsum to get in and break that up and free those, those minerals and, and fertilizer, all the other stuff that we're applying there, allow that to be accessed by the plant. Reunion, I can't speak to what their particular situation is, but I believe they, they irrigate out of the lake at Reunion Park for at least that park there. And I know that Buffalo Run Golf Course also irrigates out of their lakes. They're using slightly different water. Like I said, like I mentioned before, we, we did test some water additions to try to cut and mitigate that, the water quality that we're getting from the, from the non-podable irrigation system. But we are on a city non-podable system and not operating out of a lake. So we're slightly different from those two sites. And we did investigate putting in some sort of injection pump and treatments. Again, we have that research. We've done some of it. With the results we're seeing right now, the cost for that system was, was fairly significant as well. And then there's ongoing maintenance for that. So we have chosen at this point to just kind of keep that shelved. And if, it's, it's always an option for further use if we need. But at this point, with the results we're seeing, we're hopeful that it won't be necessary.
You're doing a great job, Mr. Waterhouse. Thank you very much. You spoke much better. Thanks.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Ellen Thomas?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Waterhouse for the presentation as well. I believe the correct term, is it called Exerscape? Because I'm wondering, do you know, will the city start blending using more Exerscape like around the edges of the parks? Because I, I think I'm saying it correctly, but is it, I, I, from what I've been told, does Exerscape, it, it doesn't possibly reduce some water by use up to sixty percent more? And is that considered in the future plans? And is that considered in the future plans?
So we do have to recall the the couple of pictures that I called out at Pioneer Park and at Frontera Park. They have some native grass areas in the foreground there that we're looking pretty nice. And we had healthy stands of native grass there. That's exactly what we have also out here at Villages of Buffalo Run East, and it's pretty much a design standard in all of our parks moving forward. And it's been there since probably the drought of back in whatever was two thousand two, two thousand three era when we were experiencing significant drought. Was a shift to move to those types of more water friendly, water consumption friendly, lower use landscape materials. So you'll see that we do have a pretty significant design element already in parks for all of our passive areas. Our native grass areas, which do use significantly less water and take less maintenance. Frankly, we aren't mowing them weekly. We aren't fertilizing them as much. And when we do fertilize them, it's a much lower rate. If we do fertilize at all, right, we would fertilize at a place like Villages of Buffalo Run East because we're looking for getting the growth and the and the soil conditions right. But at the rest of our parks, we do not fertilize our native grass areas. We don't spend much time on maintenance on those much. Go in, pull weeds once in a while and we mow them a couple of times a year and that's it. So the the irrigation is significantly less than the turf grass areas and there are shrub beds and other drip areas throughout our park system. So it is something that's an industry standard through the industry nationwide, metro wide especially, and Commerce City does already address that water consumption to the design of our facilities. Additionally, I would say if we're talking water savings, the Parks Department uses almost a hundred percent of our facilities are on smart controllers. So they're they're connected to the internet. We have access to log into those via our phones, our laptops, our desktop computers from home, wherever you can get internet access. They also utilize weather centers and weather data. And they use what's called evapotranspiration. So essentially the smart computer, once we've programmed it, goes in and figures out based on the temperature, the solar radiation, a number of factors of the weather for the last several days. And it adjusts our runtimes automatically upwards so that we are not just out there setting and forgetting like a lot of the old controllers would be just set it to run twenty minutes for all zones and then it would run twenty minutes whether it rained last night or it was raining right now. So we are pretty, we are very water conscious and we we manage our water budget annually and we also manage each site for water leaks. If the system has leaks, it detects over overwatering per zone. If there's unscheduled, that's it down automatically with the use of master valves and sends us alerts. So we're pretty, pretty well trying to save as much water as we can throughout the system, not only for cost, but also for just the the environment and the regional effects that that has.
Okay, thanks. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions for Mr. Waterhouse? Seeing none, we will move on. Thank you, sir, for your presentation, all the hard work you guys are doing to bring the parks up to speed.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is law enforcement update. Will City Attorney Sheasley and Chief Nichols please make the presentation?
Good evening, Mayor, City Council members. I know Mr. Sheasley is going to be assisting heavily with this. Just a couple of side notes. The presentation regarding the assistance that we provided to Denver is going to take about fifteen minutes. What I'll do is I'll pause in between each slide so that I don't go through the whole thing and get asked questions. So I'll give everybody an opportunity to ask questions as we progress through the slides. And then when we get to the Senate bill impact that it's going to have on policing in the state of Colorado, Mr. Sheasley is going to conduct the majority of that investigation. And I will jump in as necessary. And again, if you have questions, by all means, feel free to stop us at your leisure. And on that note, if there are no comments or questions, Dylan, if you could throw up the presentation, that would be great. All right, and next slide. And I'm sorry, I'm looking at it on two screens with my notes, so I'm gonna try to keep pace with us. So the primary question was why were we in Denver in the first place? And so I wanted to provide some context to that. And what you see here is a synopsis of our Commerce City Policy three twenty seven, which governs outside agency assistance. This policy again provides guidance on when we can respond to requests for mutual aids when assisting any other agency, not just law enforcement. Typically, those requests are vetted by the on-duty commander. And then our employees, again, wherever we go, whatever we do, we follow Commerce City policy. So simply because we're in Thornton or Denver does not mean that our employees get to subjugate our policy and do what Denver asks them to do. They're held to to our standard. And mutual aids are extremely important to law enforcement. They're sort of a force multiplier. For instance, during the Aurora Theater shooting, Commerce City sent a fairly large contingent down there. And then we use them for routine bases as well. We need to check an address in Westminster or Thornton or anywhere in the city or anywhere in the metro region, quite frankly, nationwide. We could put out a request to have a neighboring agency do that request for. So it is also a time saver. So that's governing mutual mutual aid agreements. And then I'm gonna, Dylan, if you can move the slide, please. So this particular request for mutual aid was made by the Denver Police Department at about almost five PM on Saturday, May thirtieth. This was after they had already been experiencing protests in Denver that began on Thursday and Friday. On Saturday, they reached out for some assistance for Saturday night. Their request came in for protest management assistance. And what we sent down there was a contingency for not only Commerce City, but the Brighton Police Department, because we are a joint SWAT team. So we sent two police commanders, one from our department, one from Brighton, four sergeants. The joint Brighton Commerce City Police Department SWAT team, all of them went down there to assist. In total, there were twenty-three personnel in total. That number fluctuated over the three-day weekend. We sent twenty-three down on Saturday. I believe we sent down two additional resources the following day on Sunday. And then I don't think we went back down on Monday. So between twenty-three and twenty-five people, we sat down in total. Next. And so it's important to note that during the the, while we were assisting Denver, every day before we went and did anything, there was a joint meeting that took place in Denver where we were addressed by the incident commander for Denver. And this is the person that had full authority over everybody that was down there assisting. Not just Denver Police Department assets, but the rest of the region's assets as well. That briefing did a couple of things. Eight, familiarize everybody with the external agencies. Provided an update on the previous day's events. They talked about areas of concern, deployment strategies, and any other tactical concerns before people went out to be deployed where Denver best thought they would fit. This was not a direction. It was sort of a back and forth on here are the resources that I have. Here's where I think I could best be deployed. So there was actually quite a bit of thought process that went behind where our organizations went. In addition to that, along with that deploying personnel, again, as I mentioned, all of our all of our personnel are required to follow our individual department policies, not necessarily Denver's policy. And so part of that briefing also covered the rules of engagement. And as you can see here listed, I broke these out separately because pepperball and OC spray were used to protect individual personnel. So if somebody was confronting me, I could use those two tools. The pepperball less lethal shotgun, forty thirty-seven millimeter impact munitions and diversion devices were primarily used to protect others and for area denial. And I'll get into that a little bit later. So in case we didn't want anybody going down a particular street, we would use those devices to keep them from going in an area that had been deemed off limits or require protecting. It was also used to protect violence against other people as well. And then finally, chemical munitions were only used under the incident command authority. We cannot use chemical munitions. That's the burning, stinging, eye irritants that potentially could affect breathing. Those were only used after dispersal orders were given and under the authority of the incident commander. So individual units did not have discretion to deploy chemical munitions on their own. They had to seek approval from the incident commander. And there would have to be a dispersal order given and then they would they would request permission to use ammunition. No questions? Dylan, if you go to the next slide, please. So here's what we deploy, pepperball projectiles, twelve gauge less lethal rounds, forty and thirty-seven millimeter direct impact rounds. Those are actually the last four. The forty thirty-seven millimeter, the sting ball grenades and the CS gas are not ordinary patrol munitions. Those are designated specifically for our special weapons and tactics team. They require specific training to deploy. So those are not things that you would normally see on patrol. The pepperball projectiles and the twelve gauge less lethal rounds are. It's important to note that the pepperball projectiles that were deployed in Denver, almost seventy-five percent of them were inert. Which means it was just a ball filled with air. They were not fired directly at people, generally speaking. They're fired at the ground. People don't know what's in it. They tend to avoid them. The sting ball grenades, I, for lack of a better term, are a very loud bang. And then again, the CS can, the CS gas, those were the the chemical munitions that I discussed earlier that were deployed as area deterrents. Next slide. And so while we were down there, this is a photo of actual footage from a local news channel. And if you can see where the fire is, the members standing in front of that are from our joint SWAT team. They were standing directly and this was the one of three Molotov cocktails that were thrown at them. As you can see, those things are extremely dangerous. That gas splatters and lights ignites everything. And we were fortunate not to have any of our people injured. Having said that, there were some injuries that did occur while we were assisting Denver. We had two of our members had some pretty significant contusions from thrown bricks or rocks. We're not exactly sure what they were, but they were large, hard objects. Four members were exposed to a thrown unknown putrid liquid. We anticipate it was probably believed to be body fluids of some sort. And then one of our members suffered a severe sprained ankle. And that was from the combination of Commerce City and Brighton as well. Next slide. So when we talk about accountability, then I know there were some questions as to what we were doing down there and how do we monitor that? Again, our policy calls for that anytime use of force is used that a report is actually completed. That was, that was done in this case as well. There are no excuses to get out of it. We also had our folks down in Denver were wearing body worn camera footage. And now that's a couple of hundred hours of video over the the two, three days we were down there. And so having staff go through that is going to take a considerable amount of time to make sure that we use our force judiciously and within the confines of of our specific policy. When that occurs, following all of our use force forces, our staff will gather a command review team together. They will took a look at all the occurrences. We'll talk to the members that use the force and then a final decision. Excuse me. Will be made for each of those individual applications of use of force. If it sounds as though that may be a high volume of work, it absolutely is. They're required to articulate a reasoning for everything that they do when it requires force. And so we'll be looking for the same things during this assignment as well. And once all of that is done, the staff makes a review. They forward that to me for review. I'll also take a look at that information. And then I am ultimately the final decider and the adjudication for use of force complaints that occur by our members. And on that note, Dylan, if you can go to the next slide, but before we move on, I wanted to see if there were any questions related to Commerce City's participation in the Denver protests.
Any questions at this time for the chief?
I see none. On that note, Mr. Sheasley, you are up, sir.
Thank you, chief, and thank you, mayor and council members. I'm just concerned that there were no questions for the chief, so that means they may be for me then. So the chief is going to help me out on policy implications, but I'm going to talk to you tonight about the new law that was passed, the most significant law of this legislative session. Senate Bill twenty-two seventeen. As you all know, it's a complicated bill that addresses a lot of topics. It was drafted and amended and introduced and passed very quickly. And so I think we'll be seeing the repercussions of the bill, both positive, negative, uncertain for years to come. And possibly seeing some amendments to clear that up. A lot of what we know about the bill is speculation and we'll see how the courts implement it and how the legislature maybe amends it to streamline it and make it more consistent with Colorado. Other statutes in the next legislative session. And so just before I start on the presentation, the city's goal and the police department's goal is to to get this right, not just to comply with the law. But for the benefit and safety of the police department and its officers and for the community that interact with the police officers. And there are so many topics in here. If you have specific questions, I'm happy to try to address them tonight or offline. I know some communities are doing executive sessions with their councils on specific legal questions. So if those come up, I'm happy to address those. Can we jump to the next slide, please, Dylan? And so this is a broad summary of what we have to do now. And what we have, what we have to report are the two main components of the bill. We're not going to address the impacts on jails or potential actions by the district attorney and some of the district attorney's opportunities for investigations. The law and what we're not going to really address tonight is what we already do in great detail. There are a number of things that we already do as a matter of practice and as a matter of policy. And so we're going to run through these, but in general, the law talks starts with body worn cameras. It has significant measures to address profiling and the manner in which police may interact or initiate a contact with members of the public. Providing information on officers when that contact is made. Reporting on the nature of that contact and some of the basis for it. And then really goes into great detail with new requirements and standards and civil liability relating to use of force and the obligations of officers to intervene when force is being used inappropriately. And then, as you'll see on the right there, there are a number of reporting requirements that ultimately the state will compile. Can we jump to the next slide, please? And so going through the new requirements first, body worn cameras are a significant part of the bill. So significant and in detail that they are not going into effect until July of twenty twenty-three. I won't go through the requirements in detail tonight. The city currently has body worn cameras in twenty sixteen, I believe. Had a significant upgrade in in twenty nineteen, chief, right? I think it was twenty nineteen, not twenty twenty. And some of those, one of the updates, I believe, is automatic recording on certain events. And so it required officers to be less diligent about having to turn their body worn cameras on or off. It was an automatic system. This is going to have a really significant impact when we implement the body worn camera requirements because it's going to address in detail when the camera must be on, when it cannot be on, mandating discipline if the officer has not operated the camera appropriately. And then it has significant changes about mandating disclosure of what is essentially a criminal justice record. And then privacy protections relating to that, essentially writing a whole new law over an existing body of law in the Colorado Criminal Justice Records Act. And then disclosures, obviously, in criminal cases that come out of this. It's going to be very interesting to see how this plays out and I expect some significant cleanup. One of the big things that is going to come out of body worn camera requirements is that if the camera is not on or was operated inappropriately, there is a chance that the district attorney could, or the defense attorney in another case could determine, there would be an inference that something inappropriate was happening when the camera was turned off. So that will be very interesting to see how that plays out over time. And just a side note, I've tried to put references to the sections of the law in parentheses if you're following along at home. And then to the actual laws themselves in the Colorado revised statutes. And then another note, as we go through, if there is an effective date noted, that's when it's effective. Otherwise, the certain provision was effective immediately when this was passed and signed by the governor in June. So most of the law was effective immediately. The body worn cameras was not. I'm not going to touch on body worn cameras again, so if there are any any questions about that, please feel free to ask them now or hang on to them. Okay, Dylan, can we have the next slide? Another requirement that is new is meant to address the uh profiling issues whereby demographic standards and race uh may be the basis for a contact of a police officer uh to a member of the community. Um and so there are a number of provisions throughout the law that address this. Um but essentially though this law sets out what is already a legal standard, that there be a requirement for a legal requirement to have a contact. Um and now there is a definition of contact about enforcing the law, investigating a possible law violation, the boundaries of which uh we're currently debating and discussing. Um and when that contact is made, though, an officer uh has to collect data and provide it to the police department. And I believe ultimately to this data gets reported to the state, which will then compile the data and report it later. Um the officer's perception of the demographic data of the persons involved in the stop um has to be reported, the details of that contact, where it was, when it was, how long it was, why did, why was the stop there? If it's a traffic stop, there are some limitations. You don't have to do it for the whole car, just the driver. You have to discuss the result of the contact, other actions taken like whether you uh discharged a firearm, unholstered a weapon, um whether you had a search, whether there was consent. So there's, there's a significant new amount of work that officers are required by state law to collect. Um when um going through any sort of contact. Which is may sound broad, but we believe it's a much smaller scope of interactions uh with police, between police and members of the community. Um next slide, please. Everyone also, unless they are cited or arrested, would be now provided a business card, uh which I believe our officers already provide. And our officers have name badges, uh nameplates, and um I I don't know if their badge numbers are reflected on their badges. But um if you are subject to a contact, which is again a a limited scenario, you'll be provided a business card that has the officer's name, division, well, everybody's um part of the Commerce City Police Department. So uh it's pretty easy to find an officer in the Commerce City Police Department, given its size. The phone number for reporting comments, if it's a traffic stop, and then information about how to file a complaint. I believe this is information the city already um provides very easily. And this may be, you know, in any sort of um warning, um uh consensual conversation, you're going to get a business card from a police officer now. Um and I I don't know the status of the police departments updating those and providing those. I believe that that part of the law went into effect pretty immediately and that information was being provided. Next slide, please. And then, as I mentioned, uh that contact data is going to now be reported to the state. Uh this is one that is effective in twenty twenty three, along with a number of other um bits of information, very important information that the state will then, I believe, publish and make available to other law enforcement agencies and I believe the public, um including significant use of force cases, um resignations in the context of a personnel investigation. If there is an investigation going on into a member of a police department, um and that officer then resigns, that must be both reported and then the state will make that available. Actions of unannounced entry by police officers, um even when serving a warrant, uh would get reported after the fact. An intervention by a fellow police officer into a use of force. Um and I say use of force, however, the statute is written broader than the phrase use of force. And we'll get to that in a moment. Um and that level of internal reporting to staff. And then um all of the interprofiling data that was collected uh will be also reported. Next slide, please. And so um now on to the more substantive uh procedural and and personnel related matters um is a specific intervention requirement where every officer um is obligated to stop or prevent another officer from using excessive force during certain events, arrest, detention, booking, taking someone into custody, um or conducting crowd or riot control. You're obligated to stop or prevent them from using that excessive force, that the level of stop or prevent is not made clear in the law. The city, you're required to report it and there would be investigations as well. And the law also provides employment protection for officers that do intervene and report um on those uses of force. Uh it is a misdemeanor in addition uh to civil liability that we'll address later. Uh there is a potential criminal penalty if an officer fails to intervene to prevent that unlawful use of force. It is very significant that the Commerce City Police Department already has a policy on intervention. It's a duty to intercede that um is very similar, but uh we'll have to update this policy to uh make sure it matches the the statute. However, the exact boundary of this duty to intervene is going to be something that is determined um over over time. We'll jump to the next one, please. And now this next um section uh talks about use of force specifically. Um this particular provision is effective in September of this year. If there was a delay provided to allow for training of officers. I think it's also very significant to note that the Commerce City Police Department has a very detailed use of force policy right now that requires reporting state law. Believe also requires reporting of certain use of force. Um and so integrating this, our policy and this use of force policy um is going to be a significant amount of work. And um these standards are not uh always defined and are going to require a lot of legal interpretation and potential litigation over time. But to present these items, uh the first significant matter is that an officer must use nonviolent means before using any type of physical force. And then the officer is also limited when using that physical force to certain scenarios, affecting an arrest, preventing escape, or preventing imminent threat of serious bodily injury, injury or death to the officer or another person. There's a prohibition on using deadly force for minor or nonviolent offenses. That doesn't necessarily mean that a person um that is committing a secondary action following a minor or nonviolent offense would not be subject to that application of force. Um but if an officer is interacting with a person solely for a minor or nonviolent offense, deadly force limitation can apply. General applications of use of force have to be consistent uh with minimizing injury to others. And then there has to be a follow up action taken by the officers. And again, there are reporting requirements here. I will reiterate that our police department currently has a use of force policy and and has operated within that policy and I believe updated it in the last couple of years uh with community input. And chief, do you want to uh mention that at all?
Yeah, I just want to remind council that when we went through our DOJ process a few years ago, uh a lot of the things that the legislature is talking about were already incorporated. Uh the business card aspect was already taken care of. Uh we had discussed the actual documentation of contacts, but it was too cost prohibitive to do at the time. Um right now, we're doing it, but I can tell you the time restraints on officers to individually fill out contact cards for every stop uh probably means less stops. Um it it it's taken about ten to fifteen minutes to complete the list of questions that you have to be able to submit back to report to the state. Uh and regarding our use of force policy, we have probably one of the most comprehensive use of force policies in the metro region area. Uh a lot of that work came through the DOJ process. Uh it had been thoroughly vetted by our community, the ACLU, Cult of Vondo. Quite a few people got to take a look at our policy and provide some input on it. So it's one of the areas that this changes a lot of structure to it. And as the city attorney mentioned, a lot of these things are not very well defined. Um so it will be interesting to see how this plays out and what actually will be required of our officers when they interact with a potentially dangerous suspect. So on that note, I'll turn it back over to Robert.
Thank you, chief. Can we have the next slide, please, Dylan? Uh very specific item in the legislation was a prohibition on uh chokeholds, which is defined in the legislation very broadly as uh as you see here, any kind of pressure that makes breathing difficult there possible with pressure to the neck, throat, or windpipe that stops the flow of breath to the brain. Our city's uh existing policy prohibits chokeholds, carotid restraints, and lateral vascular restraints of any type. So I um the good news is that our policies uh meet or exceed some of this legislation's standards uh in a lot of instances. Next slide, please. That prior prohibition on chokeholds and this new prohibition on the use of deadly force to make an arrest were effective immediately when the law was signed in June. Deadly force can only be used to make an arrest when all other means of apprehension are unreasonable, given the circumstances, and the arrest is for a felony that involves the use of physical force or deadly force or threatened or actual use. Um there is an immediate threat to the officer or another person, and then the force employed doesn't create a substantial risk of injury to someone else. So there are um significant inhibitions on using deadly force to make an arrest here. And there is an announcement requirement where the officer has to identify themselves and give a clear verbal warning prior to uh the use of a firearm or other deadly force. Our use of force policy already contains a use of deadly force standard that will need to be integrated into this policy, into this uh legal requirement. Next slide, please. Uh notwithstanding those prohibitions on the use of force, the use of chokeholds and the use of deadly force, the law does provide an exception for the use of deadly force if the officer has an objectively reasonable belief that lesser force is inadequate and the officer or another person is in immediate danger of being killed or receiving serious bodily injury. I apologize for reading the slides, but uh these are significant and the words here matter uh that this exception is very similar to the standards that currently exist in our policy. Um and so despite these limitations on the use of force, there is a broader exception that possibly applies come September. Um I think due to a drafting issue, it was left out of immediate application. Um but hopefully, no one has to rely on this exception. Next slide, please. And then finally, with regard to the use of force in a different section of the bill, there are limitations on using nonlethal weapons uh when responding to protest or demonstrations, which are not defined terms. Uh protests or demonstrations are um could be any variety of um civil activism in in public. I expect, I I don't know, but I think um there's a commonly understood expectation of what our protest or demonstration is. But um that's one interesting area here. The use of nonlethal weapons are um restricted. You cannot use kinetic projectiles um and other items that target the head, pelvis, or back um or indiscriminately discharging those projectiles into a crowd. And then you can't use chemical agents or irritants um like pepper spray, pepper balls, those OC spray and other items um to disperse a crowd unless you give a dispersal order that is broadcast in a way that is likely to be heard and then repeated if it's not complied with. So you have to give it um once in a way that can be heard and then repeated if you don't get a response. And then you have to give sufficient time and space uh to comply. Again, something that's undefined, uh sufficient time and space. Next slide, please. It's also worth noting that our current policy does address the use of these um types of nonlethal or less lethal, I don't, I don't know the correct term, um that the chief uh mentioned earlier in his presentation. And now on to some of the consequences related to this law. Very significantly for police officers and for the department is um the opportunity for the police officer standards and training board to revoke the certification required of all uh such peace officers. It is mandatory revocation of their certification unless they're exonerated of the underlying issue by a court where you plead guilty or are convicted of a crime related to use of force, threaten use of force, or the failure to intervene. So that standard then bubbling up here as well. So if you have a criminal um guilty plea or conviction, or if you're found to be civilly liable for an unlawful use of force or the failure to intervene uh in a use of force. Those are mandatory. The post board can also revoke certification for the failure to complete certain training. Um this is a very significant item um going forward uh to address problems uh that the legislature perceived and uh will have impact on our personnel policies here. And also will have an impact on the manner in which prosecutions and lawsuits proceed against police officers. Uh next slide, please. One of the most uh significant sections of the bill, and I think one that causes the most concern uh from a lawyer's perspective, um is the new basis of civil liability in state courts that was created by this law that allows for a lawsuit in state courts for the deprivation of any individual rights, not just for the use of force, but for any deprivation of individual rights guaranteed by a certain section by the Bill of Rights of the Constitution, the state constitution, and the failure to intervene to stop such deprivation. So uh both the city and an officer could be sued for the deprivation of those rights through an action that deprives a person of their constitutional rights or uh for the failure to intervene. Um this is a liability that is similar to an existing federal law. And you see most lawsuits brought um involving uh police actions in federal court for that reason. So we would anticipate seeing more state court actions, particularly because the um the legislature both waived governmental immunity, including notice requirements and limitations on damages, and uh prohibited the application of the concept of qualified immunity. So currently, the Colorado Government Immunity Act, um in recognition of the fact that government damages are paid for with tax dollars, um and with the type of service the public provides, caps damages uh from any particular claim at a few hundred thousand dollars. In addition, uh in order to bring a lawsuit, you have to file a notice of claim appropriately within one hundred and eighty days. Um those no longer apply uh to these particular types of cases. And then uh qualified immunity um is a judicially created concept in federal law where in a a public official is not subject to liability and and the government they work for is not subject to liability if their action um did not violate clearly established law. If a court hadn't determined that that type of action was unlawful, then they would not have liability for that action. Qualified immunity is um applies to claims against many types of public officials, including um council members at time, elected officials and other appointed officials. But this lawsuit uh basis for a lawsuit applies only to um post certified peace officers. Um and so qualified immunity would exist in federal lawsuits uh involving other officials, but not in these cases. And those are very significant um because the liability here would accrue both to the police officer and to the city as its employer, um creating potentially significant budgetary implications. The law specifically requires the city to indemnify its officers, a concept that already exists. And there are exceptions that I'll address on the next slide. Um but that liability accrues to both for both settlements and judgments. Potentially exposing officers to personal uh monetary liability. In addition, um lawsuits would be financed by the city uh for the plaintiff if the side prevails in the litigation, uh because we would have to pay the attorney's fees and costs. Um the city does not have a reciprocal right there. Only the person bringing the lawsuit would be entitled to attorney's fees and the city would only get that in very limited circumstances that are infrequently applied. Um there is a two year statute of limitations, so any lawsuit would have to come within two years. So there is a a bit of repose there. Uh so there are a number of um areas where this um liability raises concerns for the city from a planning and budget perspective. Can we go to the next slide, please? Specifically as to the duty to indemnify officers for their liability for settlements and judgments. Cities, um and this was an amendment to the legislation that allowed cities to fully indemnify uh their officers and not always put an officer on the hook personally for um damages or for a settlement. If the city determines the officer uh acted in good faith and reasonable belief that the actions were lawful, the city can fully indemnify them. But they don't have to indemnify the officer and thus would make the officer personally liable for twenty five thousand dollars or five percent of the settlement or judgment, whichever smaller, if they don't make that good faith determination. The city does not currently have a process for doing that, so that's another thing we'll be looking at uh over time. And then the second exception is the city's indemnity is not required if there is a conviction for a criminal violation, the underlying conduct. Next slide, please. And then just a few other remedial actions. And then just a few other remedial actions that don't involve damages. The Attorney General, if they can do a public integrity lawsuit, if the department has a pattern or practice that is asserted to be unlawful after trying to work with the city, if there's not a remedy, then the Attorney General could sue the city to get an injunction to require the city to correct its ways. The post board could enforce its rules, the rules that are not yet published, I believe. And then the Attorney General can file criminal actions and have the misdemeanor action that a district attorney could enforce for the failure to intervene. Next slide, please. And that is a very fast and, I think it was fast personally, discussion of this very important law. Wanted to note, and the chief can share with me on some of these, given that this law is is under two months old, we're still identifying where this can impact operations and how the city is going to plan to deal with it in addition to beginning compliance with it when it was enacted. There are a number of uncertainties that may not be significant, but they may be. The potential for liability is unlimited. It should be minimized by compliance with the law and by good training and good policies that we already have in place. We don't know if our insurance rates will change. We don't know what potential judgments the city could see in the future. There may be an impact on the retention of personnel. It may have an impact on the roles of law enforcement and where law enforcement interacts with the community and where is it appropriate for them to do so, including in schools and other minor issues, more more community-related issues. As the chief mentioned, the time it takes to do the contact reporting takes a significant amount of time. And is it appropriate to have law enforcement engaged in a role where they then have to spend most of their time filling out this paperwork? There are obviously policy revisions and training requirements that are going to have to be done very quickly. And then there are other budget impacts related to personnel and costs. The record-keeping and compliance reporting standards are significant, especially when it comes to body worn cameras. That data storage is going to be monumental, from what I understand. And then the processing of those of that data, including body worn camera footage and the disclosure of it likely would require additional personnel and data storage. Internal review processes are going to become more rigorous and require more staff time to conduct. Training officers are going to have to spend more time off the street to go through training, I believe, and to get that training implemented. And then I there will undoubtedly be an impact on recruitment and retention of officers. I know I mentioned that above, but when it comes to costs, my understanding that keeping officers employed and recruiting officers comes with a significant cost, and that that training cost is something the city will have to enhance and make up for. So that is, that's a significant amount of information, chief. If you want to correct or add anything to what I said, I'm obviously not a law enforcement official, but did my best.
No, thank you, Robert. I appreciate that. I just wanted to advise counsel on a couple of things that you mentioned. We are already starting to see the effects in employee turnover as it relates to the new bill. One of the things that most police officers realize is that if they don't have to do this to great concern of their own, then they won't. And so we anticipate we're probably going to lose five to seven people. We've already lost three so far. As the city attorney mentioned, we're going to really have to take a look at our job description and see if some of the new roles that we're doing are going to be suitable for us moving forward. We have in fact met with at least the Adams 14th School District regarding the role of SROs in the school, and there's going to be a significant shift in the service level that we can provide in these private entities based upon the new law. As you're probably are aware, SROs contact students all day long. Having to document those contacts is not fair to students, and then recording them in a school environment could potentially lead to some unfair disadvantages. So for all intensive purposes, the SRO program, despite, and I'll be the first one to tell you, it is a very well-run program. The new law makes it extremely difficult for us to continue doing what we had been doing. A meeting with Adams 14, there tends to still be an agreement that we do want to be good partners. How we mesh that partnership is going to be important moving forward, given our new guidelines. Again, both Robert and I both mentioned the compliance with the contact reporting. That is a huge undertaking for us. I anticipate there will be less contacts because of the requirement, less contacts with police officers while on the surface may sound appropriate, but that's less potential criminals we're stopping, less potential citizens that we're assisting, simply because the context of the law places a big gray area around if we should even be doing that practice or not. So that's going to be an area we'll be working pretty closely with City Attorney's Office to make sure that we're good. Some other anticipated costs. Already for the next budget cycle, we're asking for two additional employees to do nothing but body worn camera footage audit. And quite frankly, I don't think that's going to be enough. I think what the legislature failed to realize is these are mechanical devices. They fail, they fall off. They, for whatever reason, just stop working. And to have that automatically be seen as a negative judgment against the officer seems to be a little disingenuous. But it is what it is, and we're going to roll with it. But yeah, we need at least two employees just to be able to redact and take a look at footage before we release it to the public within a required 14-day time period. Those not familiar with redaction of body worn camera footage, it takes about one hour to do, one hour to do 15 minutes of footage. That's a lot of time spent looking at body worn camera footage to audit, and given the new time restraints have moved up, we anticipate that probably will become another function of the police department entirely. And then finally, we're not sure what the impact to recruiting is going to be. I can simply tell you that the other agencies that have started recruiting have been sorely disappointed. Four 40 applicants scheduled for a test and one shows up. So there's going to be a negative impact. We don't know what that's going to be. I am still optimistic. Commerce City is a great place to work. We have a story to tell, and quite frankly, I think the reason we're not seeing some of the issues that other municipalities are seeing with trying to get on board is we've already done the hard part. Now it's just a matter of incorporating the new law into our operations as we see fit. And then finally, something I wanted to mention related to the training, we've got a very short window to get that done. Given the COVID pandemic, we're taking a look at some really unusual things to get all of our workforce trained so that they can be compliant. And we're also waiting for the state is anticipating on rolling out their Senate bill training regimen, August 1st is what we've been told. It'll take some time, take a look at that, sit down with City's attorneys, City's Attorney's Office, take a look at it, make sure it fits our needs before we can actually incorporate that in the training. So that will be a very, very tight window to get done. But again, it's it's a challenge. We're looking forward to it. And you know, we have a saying in the Commerce City Police Department that nothing's ever easy in Commerce City. So at the end of the day, we want to make sure that it works for us. So on that note, both Robert and I are available for questions.
Questions for the attorney and the chief? Councilwoman Ellen Thomas?
Yes, thank you, Chief Nichols and Mr. Sheasley for your report. I was just curious if you, what was the outcome of the DOJ investigation? And how will this new law work together? Like, do the two work hand in hand? And which part superseded the DOJ since we're a home rule city?
It's interesting to note, the DOJ did not issue a actual report. They simply came out at our request. And so a lot of the things that they suggested that we do, we incorporated probably 95% of them. The other 5%, and I think I alluded to this earlier, like documenting contacts, were entirely too cost prohibitive for us to do. The DOJ presented us with some recommendations that we chose to adopt. Quite frankly, we didn't have to adopt any of them, but that would have been, again, disingenuous, and we wanted to make sure that we wanted to be transparent in the way that we were proceeding forward with the with the recommendations. I don't think the new law sort of, the new law takes precedence over any DOJ recommendation. So as the city attorney mentioned, we do have a pretty comprehensive use of force policy. We're going to have to revisit it and make sure that it's compliant with the law.
All right, thank you.
And you also mentioned the the home rule municipality aspect of it. The state legislature in this case made a choice to include language that would override home rule considerations, always subject to a legal challenge potentially, but I think in this case that in the regulation of police tactics would would not be something that we could challenge, most likely. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Robert.
Councilwoman Noble?
Thank you both for the very comprehensive reports. I am really curious about the crime rate in Commerce City. And we have this discussion, I think it was back in January, about getting monthly crime reports. It's really difficult to make any decisions or recommendations or even look at the at budget issues that are that might come up stemming from this without having a picture of what our police department deals with monthly. We have no idea, none whatsoever. We do know about individual incidents. For example, there was a homicide. And you reported, Chief Nichols, that it was the sixth homicide in the city this year. I don't know whether that's a lot for Commerce City, whether that's a few for Commerce City, what it was last year, because there isn't any, there aren't any records that are available to us that would give us that information. So before we look at this on the budget level, I hope that we can receive some information to have a clear understanding about what our officers are contending with on a daily basis in addition to any of the new aspects that are coming forward. Thank you.
I didn't hear a question, but I want to provide some context to some of the statements that you made. Late last year, the Commerce City Police Department, we we receive our dispatching services through AdCom. We switch vendors as it relates to our CAD and RMS product. We used to be able to connect our former CAD and RMS project to a, I believe it was called Command Central, to a program that displayed that information on our website. When we transitioned to the new CAD and RMS system, that link no longer works. It's two entirely different products. And in order to rebuild that, that's going to be a significant amount of money. In addition to that, we also have not replaced our crime analyst. That is an extremely difficult job to recruit for. And typically, we get them here, we get them trained, and they leave within six months. So currently, we're contracting out our data services through the University of Texas. And that comes with some limitations on what we can do with that data. So we do have some information we can provide. One of the things that is on our website, all of our information is reported to the FBI through the NIBR's program. So our NIBR's numbers are in fact on our website, and that information is pulled quarterly. As for the monthly stuff, some days it is even a challenge for me to get information. A lot of the things we hand tally, so I would be hesitant to release that to the general public because it comes with a lot of innuendos and reporting features. For example, where we take reports at is reported where crime actually occurred. If you were to take a look at a map of where the most crimes are taking place in the city, it would show two locations. Excuse me. The Civic Center and Walmart. That's not entirely accurate. In addition to that, some of that information may be extremely sensitive. Sexual assault investigations, juvenile-related crimes. We don't have anyone dedicated that can extract that information so that it all doesn't go public. And if I was to make that request for the University of Texas, again, there are some contract obligations that we need to be aware of, and what I can actually do with that data is sort of limited to the time being. I will tell you, I am not a fan of the current way we're doing business. But because we are a member of AdCom, I have to play in the pool with six, seven other agencies. And there is a significant amount of money to come up with for the different agencies to all agree on this tool. So we're trying to go it solo. We have been working on the fix. The pandemic certainly didn't assist with that. And believe me, I'm not in the habit of making excuses. We just are in a very rough spot as it relates to our data. We've got a CAD and RMS system that pulling our extracting our data out of is a bit of a challenge right now.
That's what we were told in January. So and I heard that clearly at the time, but we're now at the end of July, and we have very serious issues that we're needing to take a look at because of the new legislation. We don't know where officers are more frequently deployed or whether there are could potentially be issues. We don't, maybe there's only two stops a day or one stop a day or something. We don't have any idea. And the other question was regarding the six homicide that you mentioned for Commerce City. Is there a number, how does that relate to Commerce City in the past? And, you know, is this, is this a step up? But I do think I need to go back to this again. I really need to know what the situation is in order to be able to make any informed decisions when it comes around to the to the budget time as well. So I hope that you can figure out some way to give us some information. It's something that our residents would appreciate as well. So there's that. And then what are we looking at in terms of these homicides? Thank you.
I can answer the homicide question for you. Those are fairly easy to count. We don't get a lot of them. I will tell you, there is no trend line that suggests one or two are okay. Quite frankly, anytime anybody dies as a result of violence in our city is a bit of a problem for me. What I can tell you is generally, we average 1.5 a year. This year, we actually are at five. One of those was medically ruled not a homicide. So I'm taking that one off the table, and we currently are sitting at five homicides for the year. That is a bit of an anomaly, but I would argue that the rest of the world is about an anomaly, anomaly. We're not the only community experiencing these high levels of violence. I think there are quite a few things that are playing against us. I'm not going to go into great detail on those, but five is is high. It's high for a city of 65,000 people.
Thank you.
I I also want to make note that two of those homicides are also involved shootings. So we've had three residents that were killed at the hands of other residents. Two of those homicides occurred at the hands of police.
Councilwoman Smith?
Thank you, Chief and Mr. Sheasley for the presentation. Chief, my question just is going back to the crime analyst. I said, I know you said we're contracting out through the University of Texas. Is there a contract time that that's going to end that we can kind of start looking for our own crime analysts?
Yes, that contract, we've been extending it, I believe, every six months. Don't quote me on that. Part of the issue is our crime analyst just analyzes crime data, which means the data is already in format that they can pull. The information going through the University of Texas is through a data scientist. He's actually digging into the backend of our CAD and RMS system and trying to make it make sense. So those are two very, we would be reminisce to hire a crime analyst before we made sense of our data. A crime analyst is not going to be able to do what the University of Texas can do.
Is there someone that we could hire that could do what, or people that could hire that could do what the university does?
There is, but it would require a significant upgrade in the actual position.
Okay.
We're working on it.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions?
I'd like to follow up on the homicide this weekend. I had a resident contact me that said that they're concerned over the fact that we get initial press releases about the events that happened, but there's no follow-on story. There's no additional information that's shared. What can we do to rectify that to make sure that residents are more in the loop about the follow-on investigation and what actually took place?
I believe your comments started to narrow off at the end, but I think I got the gist of your that follow-up information related to homicides. Generally speaking, there'll be a second, uh, release coming out if we identify a person uh, that may be wanted in relation to the homicide. If we actually identify them, when we remove the case forward to the DA's office, they take over the, uh, information flow on that. And generally speaking, to prevent tainting a jury pool, they try not to release additional information.
Sounds good. Thank you. Any other questions for the chief or the city attorney regarding this subject?
If if I may, uh, one additional thing I wanted to add, if it relates to a significant issue where we believe that the community may be actually at harm, we would absolutely reduce, release additional information about some of our findings. In this case, we anticipate, I don't want to speak out of turn. We've got some pretty decent leads that we're working, so, uh, we don't think that there is a great threat to the community. Having said that, anytime you get four or five people shot at a party, uh, that's a problem. So we're going to address it a different way, not necessarily by addressing the homicide.
Curious not to get into actual police tactics, but I understand the shooting took place about three o'clock in the morning. Isn't that late for a party to be going on?
That is extremely late for a party to be going on, but I'm 52 years old, so, uh, sure, there's some younger people that may disagree.
So I I guess my question would be, didn't we have a prior indication that we maybe had enough, uh, uh, party going on that we could have broken up that could have prevented that from taking place?
That is part of the review that's taking place. Uh, you would think, but that depends on whether it was my understanding is this thing completely took place indoors and it unfolded outside in a matter of minutes.
I had heard though that there was a band present, so I would imagine there were some kind of noise issues with that event.
I am unaware of that.
All right. Well, thank you. I'm glad to hear you guys reviewing that and then look forward to hearing more information as far as what maybe could have been done to prevent the tragic event from taking place to begin with. Um, any other questions regarding the subject?
If there are no other questions, Mayor, just to jump in, I just want to thank the chief and Matt Hader in my office who did the bulk of the work uh, for this. Um, it it's a lot to get your head around, but he he deserves credit and the chief deserves a lot of credit for working with this. Uh, very weighty lawn, getting used to it. You'll see him on the CML agenda, I believe, for the uh, virtual conference later this month to hear expanded views on this topic as well. So, thank you.
Absolutely. And thank you to everybody that was involved. We'll move on to the next subject, which is a continuation of the oil and gas reverse setback analysis. Would like to invite Community Development Director Jason Rogers to present the presentation.
Thank you, Mayor, as you stated, and 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 good evening, counsel. Uh, as you stated, this is a continuation of conversations around oil and gas uh, from last Tuesday, July 21st, 2020. Uh, what staff has brought before you tonight, uh, is a analysis of residential development or future residential development impacts, uh, subject to both staff's recommended reverse setbacks of 500, 400, 300, based on well count and staff's feedback, uh, excuse me, council's feedback of 1,000 feet of 1,000 foot buffer with respect, um, to that. Uh, I will now turn it over to Dominic so that he can, uh, take us through what staff was able to, uh, uh, look at during our review and analysis. Thank you.
Thank you, Jason, and thank you to council. Um, so as Director Rogers mentioned, I have a very brief presentation. Um, this should take no more than five minutes. Um, and we'll reserve the rest of the time for any additional questions that you might have. Um, so moving on to the first slide here, uh, we wanted to just briefly highlight what staff's recommendation is regarding reverse setbacks. So for, and as again, this applies to the reverse setback. So this is construction of new residential units in proximity of an existing facility. Um, so as proposed, there would be basically for any permitted well sites, we're all permitted wells of not any completions. No new residential lots will be plotted within 1,000 feet of such site. Um, for all permitted sites where all the wells have any completions, um, the the table below, so table six dash one would kick in. So based on the well count, the reverse setback will come into play. Um, so what we did here, I'll I'll walk council through this map. Um, we did two different analyses. The first one is based on the existing staff recommendation. So we essentially um, did buffers around the edge of the production boundaries for all the planned extraction oil and gas facilities. Um, we were not able to conduct this analysis on Petra due to the lack of specific information needed um, that you would need to be able to review the permit to determine that. Um, and then additionally, so looking at the production site boundaries in addition to any producing or shut in well. So as proposed, the regulation would not apply to a plugged and abandoned well since that well is is plugged and abandoned and capped and typically develop will development is not going to occur there in the future. So this is for any facility that's currently producing or has not gone through the proper protocols with the COGCC to be properly plugged and abandoned. Um, so we overlaid the basically anywhere where a future residential could develop in the city as well as platted residential. And the the blue buffer is the the extent of the reverse setback. And then the red is where there's an interface between residential and the setback that could potentially be impacted. So you can see that um, two facilities that will be heavily impacted are um, the areas directly around the reunion ridge development and then some around the third creek area and then other smaller pockets. And then looking at what the thousand foot setback looks like, you can see how that that difference comes into play. Um, at so this this analysis includes the 300 feet, the 400 feet and the 500 feet. So you can see that based on facility size, some of these these circles a little bit larger than others. Um, but this is at 1,000 feet regardless of facility type, showing the 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 difference there. And then staff conducted an analysis of essentially how many acres of potential residential development could be affected. So under the 216280 recommendation, that would be roughly about 69 acres. And then at 1,000 feet, that will be 363 acres. Um, and I know that there were some questions from council on, um, potential lots affected, just for illustrative purposes. Um, I have a a little note here as it pertains to existing platted lots. Um, obviously in the the existing regulation, existing platted lots wouldn't be affected, but this is just showing how many lots are planted within the city currently where there would be a setback that exceeds that value. Um, another item to to think about as well as in terms of sketch plots, um, we were not able to include that data and that information due to some of that, um, not having an even playing field in terms of, um, sketch pop reviews and and having entitlements that we know that are coming. We we wanted to kind of play it out by that way. One way to potentially think about, um, in terms of dwelling units per acre, if you think about anywhere from a four to six dwelling units per acre in terms of what a typical um, residential development will look like in Commerce City, um, you can multiply that by the amount of acres. So for 70 acres, that's that number times the amount of, um, item there. So that's that's the analysis that was conducted on reverse setbacks. Uh, we also came back to you with a potential public hearing schedule. Um, this proposed schedule accounts for a number of factors, including, um, the COGCC schedule as well as, um, staff and special counsel availability coming back is, uh, and then, um, the Labor Day weekend. So looking at um, a Tuesday, August 11th planning commission hearing, Monday, September 21st, city council first reading, and then adoption on Monday, October 5th. Um, so with that, we'll answer any questions and, um, take any additional feedback on the the final offsetting item that we have from the the study sessions.
And very quickly, Mayor, if I may just interject, um, think what what additional piece of item of information to share with you with respect to, uh, the the maps with relations to the recommended reverse setbacks. Almost again, we didn't go to a an overly detailed review uh, of, I would say, existing approvals and or vested rights uh, as there would have some limited implications of that of that setback or reverse setback. Uh, this is once again, just a very kind of, um, response to the request of showing you, um, what that could potential impact could be. Uh, furthermore, I would say, based on our continued analysis, and I would say what has been consistent, what what we've had, uh, been undertaking as part of our review and correctly, my wrong, Dominic. That is our our recommendation that we continue, uh, or that staff will still continue to recommend uh, the gradient 500, 400, 300, uh, based on bearing well well counts. Uh, as we're balancing, uh, once again, our consistent practice and approach of being able to balance health, welfare, safety, general welfare, safety uh, with respect to, um, ultimately as well with getting existing approvals and titles and or potentially vested rights and at the same time, uh, future growth and development.
Thank you. We'll open it up for discussion, Mayor Proton.
So Jason or Dominic, can you remind me again, what what does the COGCC recommend for the reverse setbacks? 500 or what are they at?
So to provide a little bit of clarification, the COGCC, um, does not have a reverse setback requirement. And it it's strictly a local issue. So we're talking about the interface between residential development um, and oil and gas development. So when oil and gas conservation commission is looking at this, they're looking about the sighting of new facilities typically and making sure that there's not, um, a scenario where they're putting a new facility, um, in conjunction with that. Um, the COGCC is not going to have the the level of data or information on upcoming development and platted and entitled residential. Um, so there they typically don't have that requirement at the state level, but there are a number of local governments that have adopted a similar reverse setback requirement.
Okay, and the the thousand foot, if I remember, would be more stringent than any other neighboring municipalities. Um, is there kind of an average of other municipalities or is what we're doing following kind of other municipalities?
So in our analysis review, um, in terms of existing regulations on the books, um, there it's typically anywhere between 300 and 400 feet in terms of a reverse setback. Um, we haven't found a lot that taper it based on facility size. Um, but there certainly a thousand feet is is not quite where we've seen other jurisdiction regulations. Not all local governments have some form of reverse setback regulations if they regulate oil and gas development at all. Um, but that that's kind of the range that we were that we were able to find. And Matt, sir, I I don't know if you wanted to weigh in additionally on some of the research that you conducted.
You're exactly right, uh, Dominic. Uh, our research has indicated that 1,000 feet is about double, um, what anyone else has done. Uh, and the majority are between 250 and 400 feet. World County, as an example, is at 250 feet and they have the most oil and gas development of any county.
Okay, thank you.
Councilwoman Noble.
Interesting that you mentioned World County. I don't know if that is, um, what Commerce City is aiming for, Mr. Sura, but, uh, that's very interesting. Uh, I think last week when we were talking about this, one of the things that was mentioned is that what other communities are doing doesn't necessarily have meaning here. Uh, keep in mind that Broomfield and Erie both have moratoriums right now while they work on their regulations and they are, uh, going to be making them far stricter than they than they had been. And that's particularly based on experience of the oil and gas activity that has been in Erie for all, uh, these past 10 years or so and the new, um, experience that Broomfield has had over the past year. I think that one thing that is disturbing to me, uh, and and I want to make something uh, transparent here also is that, uh, the lobbyist for Oakwood Homes has contacted me about this issue and, uh, we received I think all of us received yesterday, uh, an email from Jim Hayes, who works with Oakwood Homes. I don't know who else has been contacted by the lobbyist, but I just wanted to, uh, put that out there. Um, I find that municipalities are put in a very awkward position. We're asked to be the mediator between the oil and gas operator and the developer. Why don't the developer and the oil and gas operator figure this out in advance? Either we're going to be an industrial community or we're going to be a residential and commercial community. Because we're being asked to do de facto industrial rezoning. Boom. We have 24 wells that we're looking at in the, um, southwest corner of, uh, one site. And they have the arsenal and they have electrical towers and they have high pressure, uh, gas pipelines. To suggest that maybe these homes be built 1,000 feet away instead of 300 feet away. When we are asking for a setback of 1,000 feet, it doesn't seem unreasonable to do a reverse setback of 1,000 feet. At all. Thank you.
Councilman Hurst.
Well, I'm not sure why it's troubling why the the largest developer in our city who's planning and building the north side, the the biggest developer in the north side of our city would show concern that they're going to be losing large sections of their development area that they've been planning and now we are potentially moving the goalposts on them. To me, that seems like a valid point to be made when considering, um, everything for the future of our city. So yes, I I was contacted too, and and I was told that everybody on council was going to be contacted and that that is why I sat there and listened. And so, um, one thing that I would like to point out is that that I've been talking about for the last couple of weeks is when you do 500 foot and then you go to 1,000, you didn't double the land that you took up. When you're talking about a circle around this, you're more far more than doubling the acreage that you're taking out. And so that's where I was telling you, or I've been trying to make the point of at a certain point, we remove enough land where it's not viable to sell to a developer any longer. They will then sit on it and make more money by drilling, by extracting their resources. And so to me, when you point out the large area of land that we would be, um, closing off for, uh, residential development, it it starts to point the picture of why it makes more sense to develop the the, um, oil and gas than it would be to sell it to a developer who's going to pay you a lot less than an oil and gas extraction. So just wanted to, um, continue to show my support for the staff recommendation. Um, and the other thing that that uh, Councilwoman Noble brought up was a about oil and gas and the developer figuring out before. And I remember last year, we talked about that for quite some time, that that, um, the developer and the oil and gas, uh, company had an agreement that the city, uh, played a role in on helping to find the terms to that agreement. And so, uh, there, that happened. That was supposed to happen. That's what's been being talked about for at least 18 months. And so, um, but now it seems like we're going to be trying to change that in the middle of, uh, planning the the development.
Councilmember Hurst, don't you think we have an obligation to our residents to protect their health and safety? That is our first charge. That's what we should be considering. Whatever agreement was made between the developers last year and the oil and gas operator is strictly a business decision. We have a different role to play. We're not economic development. We are also protectors of the health and safety of our residents. There's supposed to be 2,600 homes in that area in particular. But if you look at the map that was created by the city staff, in fact, many of those little dots on there are actually, um, abandoned wells. They're not even active wells. There is not a single producing well that I found on the COGCC GIS map today in North Commerce City, not a single producing well. So in fact, it isn't a circle that's being built around anything. It's saying, choose, do you want to have homes? Or do you want to have oil and gas activity? My choice are homes and protecting the residents.
But you're asking me to come to to get on board with you on residents that don't exist. Those houses aren't built. We don't own that land. And so the developer and the landowner do not have to build those houses for us and then we'll be protecting nothing. Cause there'd be nobody living there because they will be drilling. Cause there'd be nobody living there because they will be drilling for oil and gas because that's going to be more profitable for their investment that they made in that property. So you're asking me to get on board to protect somebody that's not going to live there if we keep going this route. I am hundred percent on board with stricter regulations that were on there. I've said that many times. I just don't see a future for development. We just heard about how we need to continue growing as, as a community up north, if we want to develop in Commerce City. We heard about strategies about down south. But without commercial or residential development with, with the potential of removing residential development, we're going to kill any potential growth that's going to solve some of the issues that our, our constituents talk about all the time. Better grocery stores, more restaurants, more places to go have fun. All of those potentially die without residential growth. And if we put big swaths of land under regulation because we can't see the difference between a fully, a full production well and as it's ending its, ending its life as a well and, and, and having some type of scalable reverse setback, then we're, we're not going to see our full potential as a city because again, we don't own that land and those people, whether we want them to be, you know, proud of Commerce City and give that, you know, sell that land to a developer so they can build it. That's not how investments work. You make the most off of your investment when you have the ability to, to drill for oil and gas and that's going to make you more money than selling the land to a developer to build houses on. It's a pretty easy choice every time for those, those folks. And so you know, that's what I'm worried about. It's not about protecting those that live here. It's about, we're talking about protecting people that don't exist and won't exist because the regulation will kill that from existence.
Councilmember Hurst, the consensus was a one thousand foot setback. So that's already in place. In theory, it will be included in the regulations that we will be, we will be voting on.
No, that was the, that was why we continued just so we can hear. It's because yes, that was the original consensus, but everybody agreed to hear more tonight. So.
No, there's two different things. One is a setback, one is a reverse setback. You're getting, I believe, the two of them confused.
No, reverse setback is all I'm talking about. The thousand foot setback during production is exact, I know, I know what that is. We've already all agreed to that. That's equal with the county and I was good with that. The reverse setback is where I think we're going on.
If, if I may offer what my notations show that at our last conversation, we had a vote five for a thousand, four for staff's recommendation. And then we had one which was for an alternative solution of five hundred in place of the one hundred and staff's recommendation across the board for all well counts. It was also then discussed based on the continued conversation over the night as it relates to the potential impact on residential development going forward into the future, that staff bring back additional information for your consideration as to whether or not staying with the thousand foot or reconsidering staff's recommended language. And I look to the city attorney to determine whether or not my notations are similar to what he may have from that night as well.
Yes, Mr. Rogers, that's correct. And just so everybody knows, the study session is for consensus building with the actual votes to occur in the future as we go forward. But I think everybody's on the same page. We're not going over issues other than the reverse setback. Just, I did mention at the beginning this time, I know everybody has opinions on these matters. And it's a time for spirited debate, but I, I would recommend that everybody let everybody speak first and go through rounds of speaking, Mr. Mayor. I don't know if there's a way to facilitate that. But that's, that's my recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Councilwoman Ellen Thomas.
Yes, thank you. I, you know, just would strongly agree with Councilwoman Noble, because we have, we have to, like I said, continuously think of things. We have the Rocky Mountain Arsenal. And what about the, it's a matter, you know, can't stress enough about safety, health and welfare. And a thousand foot reverse setback, you know, I feel it is best even for reverse. So thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Grimes?
Thank you, Mayor. Really, Mr. Hurst said it very well. I, I agree with everything that he has commented this evening. I had made a note to comment about ongoing negotiations between the operator and the developer throughout the ROA process. Additionally, you know, Metro District, a Metro District was approved as a part of ongoing negotiations and planning for future residential development. So it does very much feel like implementing a one thousand foot reverse setback is moving the goalposts at this point. Additionally, I still feel that one thousand feet is a very arbitrary number. I most definitely support staff's recommendations over, excuse me, over the the one thousand foot reverse setback across the board. So another good point that, that Craig made that I had also noted was, you know, residential rooftops equals future commercial retail development. And those are the things that our residents are asking for. So to to implement a reverse setback that eliminates residential rooftops is really just affecting our long-term growth in the city. So I think that we're, we're shooting ourselves in the foot by eliminating the opportunity for more housing developments, especially already planned housing developments. So just in conclusion, support, I support staff's recommendation of the tiered reverse setback.
Councilmember Dara?
Yes, I mean, there's a definitely arguments for both sides. I agree that having a thousand foot setback is going to limit, you know, development and that is why you have people from the development industry reaching out and they're concerned about their future investment, but and it's not an investment yet, like Craig said, because they still haven't purchased the land and, you know, there's a lot that needs to be done in order for that development to occur. So you know, this does change things for, for people, but at the same time, you know, we gotta look at the other side and it's like, what's a reasonable, safe distance for residents to live from these sites? And so the reason that I had proposed five hundred feet was because that was the COGCC's original setback distance that they did the research on and said, this is a safe distance for residents to be away from these sites. And it doesn't change it whether you build the house after the well site or before. It doesn't change how safe or dangerous these things are to live around. And you're talking about residences that this is where people spend the most, majority of their time. They're there, especially right now, you know, all day and night. So you do have to think of health impacts along with the development. So you know, that's where I came at five hundred and I think, you know, the, the tiered system is, just complicates matters. We should just have one setback across the board and decide on what distance that is. I, you know, for me, I would like to see it at five hundred feet. I think a thousand is going to cause people to just go into the county, create the, the well sites and then you know, the city is not going to benefit from that because we're not going to see any of the tax revenue. Adams County is going to see it. This noble alluded to, there's no producing wells in the city of Commerce City. Well, that's true currently, but that's because they're all in Adams County, just across the street in our growth area. And so, you know, that's something that we have to consider is do we want to do we want to just say, you know, we're not going to have oil and gas in the city, but we're also not going to grow the city because of it. And then that doesn't change the fact that they're still going to be wells. They're just going to be across the street in Adams County. It's going to be the same thing as Northfield. And all these commercials, you know, the, the Prairie Center in, in Brighton where these commercial centers come in across the street, they take the business from Commerce City. And then, you know, we're left here trying to figure out why there's no commercial in Commerce City. Well, because it's already been taken up. It's just not in our city. It's, you know, right across the street. So, you know, we, we do need to balance that out and be somewhere, I think more in the ballpark of what other places are doing because you know, these wells, while they may not be in Commerce City, they are neighboring jurisdictions. And they're going to go where these things, where they can get in. So they'll, they'll be going to Adams County if their regulations are, are more lax and you know, that, that's something that we have to consider when making this decision.
Thank you. Councilwoman Smith?
I just, I really appreciate everybody's comments tonight. I really appreciate Councilmember Hurst saying if they have to choose, if developers have to choose between oil and gas or residential, they're going to choose oil and gas. I think we heard earlier that we need to grow our residential to get these commercial buildings or these commercial properties in here and get get the coals that we want to go shopping at, you know? I just think while a thousand is great, five hundred is more than other communities are doing. So I think we should come to a compromise at five hundred for reverse setbacks. That way we can get the residential, that way we can get the commercial and we can also just move with our oil and gas as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Wadiola?
Yeah, after looking at the map, I kind of agree with Councilwoman Smith and Councilman Madera. I think five hundred is a reasonable compromise and it's still stricter than other cities. So I'd go with five hundred.
Thank you. I think everybody's had a chance to talk. I'm going to throw some comments in there and then we can go around for another round of discussion if you guys decide to. Mr. Rogers, can you tell me when we addressed the initial conversation of setbacks? What was the vote on the distance of setbacks and what was the conclusion that we decided to include in this? Just regular setbacks?
I want to make sure that I say with respect to reverse setback, Mayor?
Regular setbacks, when we voted or when we decided what to include in the LDC, what did we decide and who voted for what? I think we had a thousand foot and then if there was over ten wells, we went to fifteen hundred foot.
That is correct, sir. And we had a with respect to that conversation last week, we had a, a unanimous consensus with respect to it on the twenty-first.
So everybody basically said that when they're doing active operations, then we want a thousand foot setback. And then now we're stuck trying to decide what do we want to do with reverse setbacks. Once that well is complete and it's flowing and how close do we allow houses to move in there? And this has been a spirited debate. There's a lot of strong opinions on both sides, but my question is and this is about to anybody that works in the industry because I don't really know that much about it, but what's a workover rig and what's the purpose of a workover rig? Councilwoman Grimes, can you answer that for me?
Yeah, happy to, Mayor. Workover rig is to come in and potentially fix something that's broken down whole. Much smaller rig, much smaller operation, much less nuisance than the initial drilling and completion phase of a well. Do, do you want more information than that?
No, I think that'll, that'll do. So there's a possibility that once these wells are in the completion phase and we start allowing homes to move in within, if we set the limit to five hundred foot, that we would basically have active operations within five hundred foot of a house when we have already established through unanimous consent of the council that we want a minimum one thousand foot in between a house and any active operation. So I'm left puzzled why it is that we would set ourselves up for failure where six months down the road, two years down the road, I mean, these wells are supposed to be in place for thirty years. Somewhere along the line, somebody is going to have to come in there with a workover rig on every one of these sites and going to have to do operations again. So why would we allow such operations to occur five hundred feet away from a home? When we just sat here unanimously and said, nope, the minimum for operations needs to be a thousand to fifteen hundred feet. And can somebody answer that for me?
I think it's a very different type of operation. Typically, you know, something breaking is uncommon. That would be maybe the most extensive type of repair you'd see with a workover rig. More commonly, what you would see is an MIT test, mechanical integrity test. And that, that does include pulling your, your tubing out of the well and pressuring up on the casing to check the integrity of, of the well. That is a very short operation. We're talking about a day or two and it's, it's not the same implications in terms of nuisances as the initial drilling and completion of a well. And I think that is really where the setback, not reverse setback, but where the setback comes from is when you're talking about, you know, the noise and the light potentially odors that come along with the initial drilling and completion of a well or a pad of wells. And so you're not going to see those same types of nuisances with workover operations, much shortened, a much shorter timeline as well.
Well, now you've taken my concern and you've amplified it by about a hundred times when you start talking about checking the integrity of casings and having to put them under pressure. So now you're going to have homes within five hundred feet of this operation where you're going to have somebody on a workover rig putting extensive pressure within the casing, testing it to determine whether or not the integrity is there. That's more concerning to me probably than the initial drilling operation is. You already moved in and you have children who are out playing and we're out with people out there testing the integrity of a casing. Again, I'm going to stick with, I do believe that a thousand foot reverse setback is going to be the right thing to do for our neighbors, for our community. I understand, you know what? The landowners are going to have to make a choice. They're going to have to make a choice between whether or not they want to drill for oil or they want to build houses. But we shouldn't be putting our future residents into a bad situation because we are hasty to make sure that we have a new supermarket or to make sure we have new retail. I want all those things too. I want the tax revenue from all that too. I want the tax revenue that is going to come off oil and gas if we're going to be subjected to having it in the community. But what I do not want to have is three years, four years, five years down the road, we have a workover rig coming in there and it starts to impact residents that we allowed to move that close to an oil and gas well that was approved.
I would make one more comment, Mayor. That is a requirement of the COGCC to check the integrity of your wells on an ongoing basis to avoid catastrophe. And so it's really, it's really in our best interest to have those types of operations on an ongoing basis to make sure there isn't a larger problem. It sounds scary. It's ver, it's a very mundane task.
And I'm glad that, that that's a requirement. I'm glad that the COGCC requires integrity tests to be done. What I don't want to see happen is those integrity tests being done within five hundred feet of a house. So I will give everybody a chance to respond again after making those comments. We need to give staff consensus. So please feel free to give your opinion as well as what you want us to go into the LDC before it goes to planning commission. Just to make it easy, I'll start with number nine, work your way down to number two.
I would like to go with the five hundred reverse setback.
Councilwoman Grimes?
Sorry, staff recommendation is my preference.
So I, I also wanted to respond to the why we would do five hundred and then a thousand because to me, I just want to clarify, we're basically making the assumption that anybody who moves into said houses doesn't have that choice and can't educate themselves through required documents that we're putting into the closing documents. To me, if you know you're moving next to an oil well pad and you're four hundred and fifty feet or six hundred and fifty feet and we clearly outline those potential issues that you might be experiencing, it is your right to choose to live there. Now, the reason we all agreed to setbacks from houses that already exist is because you didn't have that choice because the, the oil production happened after you moved there. But if you know that that oil derrick or that oil well or that storage facility is four hundred feet from your back door, you knew that when you bought the house, when you showed up to buy the house and you said, hmm, I like this property, but what's that oil and gas production facility behind my house? You made the decision clearly there. Now, if we were saying we're going to build low income housing there and not, and those people have much less of a choice of where they live, more of a, a, a a situation where they need to find a place. That would be one thing, but right now we're so, we're, we're proposing at market houses where people can educate themselves and make appropriate decisions on picking where they where people can educate themselves and make appropriate decisions on picking where they live. If you don't want to live within, you know, 1,000 feet of an oil well, buy on the other side of the neighborhood. It's the same prices, the same model, doesn't matter. Buy on the other side of the neighborhood. But if you want to move there, maybe there's a cost difference because it's a little bit cheaper and you aren't worried about those risks because you work in the oil and gas industry and you understand it's a mundane issue if we have a workover rig in the back. Then by all means, make that freedom of choice and that decision to move there and maybe you get a $30,000 discount on your house because of that. But in all reality, we are protecting somebody because we feel like they're too stupid to make their own decision about their safety of where they're living.
I don't feel like, you know, I don't understand whether it's low income housing or any type of housing. It's a matter of protecting the residents and the safety and the environment. As our mayor stated too, I'm strictly for the thousand period because we don't know what's, we can't live off of speculations. And, you know, whether, no matter it's on the other side of town, as you mentioned, low income and expensive area of town, I think we need to think of the safety and healthy, the safety and health of everyone in Commerce City. So I'm strictly a thousand.
Yeah, I think, thank you for everybody bringing up different points. And, you know, I didn't think about what the mayor brought up. But those are valid points and I could do 1,000 feet.
Leave it to you, Councilmember Dara.
To Councilman Hurst's point that we're doing this because we think people are stupid, but that's not even close to the idea. So, you know, there's, chances are those houses are going to be steeply discounted compared to the rest of the neighborhood because of their proximity to these wells. And so when people are looking for homes, they're looking at what they can afford, you know? People can't just afford to move next to the golf course, you know, or everyone would do it, right? There's, there's only so much people can afford and they're going to try to get the best that they can for that value. And so this is what we're talking about here where you, you're allowing it to get closer. So, yeah, people may be enticed to move to this location. And then you're going to have, like what we have in poor Commerce City right now, where, you know, people are talking about environmental injustice where, you know, they're forced to live in these places because it's the only place that they can afford. And now they're having to deal with the consequences. And those oftentimes being health impacts. So that's exactly what we're trying to avoid right now. So we do need to come to a number that's not just an arbitrary number of 250 or, you know, whatever it may be. I mean, obviously, the further away you are, the less the impacts that we're going to have as any chemicals or whatever comes from these paths disperses in the air and you're going to get, you know, less exposure to that. So the reason for 500 feet that I said was, you know, look at the COGCC's recommendations, and I'm talking, you know, pre 181 where they had done their research and said 500 feet is safe for people to be within these well sites. It would still be, you know, more stringent than any other reverse setback that's out there. And there's basis for it. Now, that's the COGCC study that said this is a safe distance to be. So, yeah, you might lose a few houses, but you're still not, you know, eating up swastika land. And it's not to the point where it's going to make a difference of whether someone come into the city or not. Because if the developer wants to develop in that part of the city or in that part of Adams County, they have to annex into the city. Well, at least if they want sewer and water and other services. So that's where it comes. But right now, the landowner, you know, that owns the mineral rights and the land, they haven't sold the land to the developers yet. And they, I don't know if they sold the mineral rights to the oil and gas producers. I'm sure they have since the oil and gas developers are, you know, applying for permits. So, you know, that's, it's a delicate balance. And I think we do need to come somewhere in the middle, have something that's realistic, but still protecting, you know, future residents in that area. But at the same time, you know, not cutting off our nose to spite our face. So I'm still with the 500 feet.
You know, I, last week I was at 1,000 feet. This week I've been bouncing back and forth, 500 or 1,000. You know, I still do think this is a good opportunity to prove to our residents, you know, that we do value their health and safety. And I think, you know, it's a good point that do we want to come back in five years and have to change this again, you know, over issues of health and safety? And there is no reason that we can't be, you know, stronger than other municipalities. So at this time, I'm going to stick with what I said last week and do the 1,000 feet.
Thank you. I think that was everybody, I think we're still stuck on four councilmen members for 1,000 feet, four councilmembers for 500 feet or staff recommendation of a phased approach. Is that correct, Mr. Rogers?
What I have, Mayor, and correct me if I'm wrong, Robert, I have five for 1,000 foot setback.
Yes, that's correct. Ms. Noble, Ms. Alan Thomas, Mr. Hughesman, Mr. Wadiola and Ms. Frank. I'll suggest it's support for 1,000. And so unless there is a desire or reported that incorrectly to change, that's how it would be, we could present it as an ordinance. And obviously, this debate can continue as council considers the ordinance. There are a number of considerations and the public has another opportunity and all the stakeholders have an opportunity to weigh in at two public hearings on this matter going forward. But that was my count.
Thank you. Let's see a couple more hands up. So I'll let you guys talk in order. It looks like Councilman Hurst and Councilwoman Grimes and Councilman Noble. Councilman Hurst lowered his hand. So Councilwoman Grimes and Councilman Noble.
Thank you, Mayor. I would just ask that councilmembers who are kind of on the fence between the 1,000 feet and the 500, is there, is there a compromise to be met there if, if those of us who are in favor of staff recommendation were willing to come to 500 feet?
I think you were directing your question directly to the mayor. Pro temp as well as maybe Councilman Wadiola. So they can answer whether or not they're willing to compromise or adjust their point of view directly.
Looking at the maps, you know, gave me a little bit of different insight. And then hearing what a working rig is or, I just think 1,000, going back to last week, is just.
Thank you for considering. And I would say I'm in the same boat. I'm going to, I'm going to stick with where I was last week because I feel like it's the right thing to do.
Yeah, thank you so much. We also talked last week about recompletions versus working, workover rigs. And they are two different animals. So I was hoping prohibit re-entry for re-completion.
But if 1,000 foot setback is wrong because you're saying it's not safe to do it. It's okay for us to drill 1,000 feet from current residents, but not future ones.
No, you're getting it backwards again. But Megan had said last week, there's no such thing. Why don't we just prohibit re-completion?
I think you misunderstood what I said. Workovers are more, are rare, recompletions are more rare.
Yes, that's, I understand that. But it does then start the process again. You have to actually refrac with the chemicals and the propant and et cetera, et cetera. So there are the fumes again in neighborhoods, period.
But if we have a thousand foot reverse setback, those neighborhoods would be built with 1,000 feet of space. And so we'd have the same setback for the
I would tend to agree.
Okay, you guys have made my point. That's good. Thank you.
Councilman Hurst?
The council's spoken on direction. I can always live with that. That's why there's nine of us. But just want to reiterate, even if we're on the very low end of the math that we were given earlier, four to six three per acre. 1,000 foot setback sets us about 110 acres from a facility. That's 330 homes every time if the landowner three lots on the very low end estimation. And that's per well, per well site. So, you know, if there's seven wells and all seven of them had residential plotting around them, then that's an easy math equation.
All right, any other comments on this subject? All right, I do want to note that this is supposed to go before the planning commission on the 11th of August. So up until the 10th and we can discuss again on the 10th of August, just to make sure that we're all final before it goes planning commission. Sound good, everybody? Great. No other items to discuss on that one. We are at the end of our agenda.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to call everyone's attention to the city manager update. Again, we published COVID grants as well as assistance with rent and mortgage assistance for homeowners. Also, the city received 13 proposals in response to sending out the packet to you later this week for your review. And you'll be welcome to discuss it at the next meeting if you so choose. A lot of, a lot of proposals.
Thanks, sir. Any questions for Mr. Tinklinburg on what he reported? Seeing none, we'll move on to Mr. Sheasley.
Thank you, Mayor. Later this week, I will be sending out the litigation and ordinance report. Please keep in mind all the pending there. So if there's a pressing matter that comes up at a council meeting, kindly request that that one be advanced and I'll work with staff to get that, those moving forward. We're trying to work on them as time permits. But as you know, the impacts and ability to work on things are limited by
seeing none, are there any other councilmembers wishing to make a report? Councilwoman Noble?
Thank you very much. And can I just take a minute to thank Mr. Tinklinburg? You know, you have really picked up the ball and run with it and it's very much appreciated. You've done a really I have three different things I want to bring up. One of them is the issue with Republic Services in the trash. We still really need to have Republic Services come before us. We still need more information about it. There was another 20 jobs. Republic needs to be meeting its obligation of its contract. I'd like to know also what's in its contract that will make it accountable. And as I've mentioned before, Arvada just voted to have Republic Services become their single hauler after having nine different companies do the entire city of Arvada. So now Arvada that's going on here before this gets any worse than it already is. So I hope we can make that happen sooner than later. We have something that has been sitting and waiting for some time because Councilmember Alan Thomas brought it up. And that was issue on city streets. And I might add, there are three of them parked around my area. I haven't reported them, but there are three. So I hope that we can get that back over reunion. And some think it's coming down 104th, some think it's coming down south of 104th. Some of us think it's coming over north 104th. But I think we have suddenly the lawsuit. And I'd like to know what, if anything, we can do. It certainly seems that we should be able to have the same level of ability to complain to the airport as other was successful, even if they do challenge it. But this has become a big problem. It's as if they have found a valley and are just cruising through it. They're also cruising out of very low with airports. That's not a problem. But you know that they know how to take off at a high elevation or take off a different direction. or take off a different direction and then make a turn and come back around at a higher elevation. So it seems
If I may, just to respond to to those items, the um RV uh trailer issue is joined at a level with the other parking ordinances in the city and we're overall, uh it hinges significantly on the the five hour parking rule that is enshrined in our our current code. And so I think council needs to have a broader discussion about that. Uh and that can certainly be set up. As to the airport issue, uh should council ask? And the city's nonparticipation in it and its rights vis a vis the airport and the FAA goes back to the nineteen eighty-eight I G A that allowed Denver to annex into Adams County and the limited protections, given the nature of Commerce City at the time was in a southern um in the northern range of the city uh from which um the airport would measure and potentially be liable for damages uh based on that that routing. Um ability to change those agreements are limited um by federal law. Um March, I want to say, um around the time that air traffic kind of start stopped um based on technological improvements. Um but happy to talk through that further with council.
That would be good because there must be some fashion of talking to D be high flying at a higher altitude. And I did forget one other item I wanted to talk about, which is um air monitoring. We had that uh set aside on oil and gas and we did not get to that topic last week. And if Jason Rogers is still on the call, can he uh help with understanding why we skipped over air monitoring? I don't think we should skip over air monitoring.
It looks like he has left us. I know that's an ongoing topic for staff. Um why don't we update you at the next meeting?
Well, because we're was an item that had been set aside. I had all of these stacked up very neatly and managed not to look at that one last Monday when it got skipped, but we weren't going back over them in the order in which they had been presented because I have them numbered also all forty seven.
Certainly. The other item that you mentioned, Republic Services, um Public Works is working with uh Mark Petrovich to uh have the presentation to council that will
See, there you are again, Mr. Tinkenberg. Thank you very much. Right on it.
Ms. Noble, what was the specific air monitoring item? Just so I can carry that back to him as well.
Yes, it's ages eleven and twelve. It was one of the items that we set aside to talk about when we returned last Monday. And it was overlooked.
Was the subject with the the mandate to conduct air monitoring or the air monitor?
Always changes. And there was discussion about that, about what about uh the staff's changes.
Okay, I will go feedback presented in the second part, but I I will certainly trust you and and take that back to him. I just uh wanted to make sure he had the specific information. Thank you.
I'd like to piggyback on that air monitoring. Um we had requested a couple months ago to like to see that get scheduled sooner rather than later. I know there is a vendor out there that's interested in presenting information to us. Would like to have them part of that.
I'm sorry, can you give me more information on that? I don't I don't recall the
I'll call you tomorrow.
The request. Okay, thank you.
I would like to first make a correction to a statement I made earlier, just uh for clarity, not to try to persuade anyone in any direction, but want to be on record stating correctly that MITs are only every two years for I I did have a a question for staff. Um I did see this week uh information out on social media regarding um who cares for the weeds on the sidewalk in front of a home uh or business for that back that there's a pretty large weed issue in front of Adam City High School along the sidewalk there. And was just curious if that's city property or the high schools um and how uh how we could get that cleaned up.
And it would be the school's responsibility. So we'll reach out to them.
Okay, and it's uh I noticed it more um kind of to the just past the high school along the sidewalk there.
Councilman Hurst.
Yeah, if if you don't mind, I can ask a similar question. Um but first, I would like to say I appreciate that that communication to the community about um ownership of weeds. You know, one of the things that uh I saw this week in social media that somewhat concerns me is um um that obviously feel like, you know, we there's better things to do during the pandemic. And and you know, obvious, you know, nobody wants to get uh that letter or anything like that. Takes more than the hour, more than an hour. I would be happy to to present the next meeting, but can I request that we do a bit more of a communications slash, I don't know if you'd call it marketing, but because it's not really selling anything, but an education campaign. We already heard that we are um potentially down to two code enforcement officers with six uh positions available. And so um they're already short staffed. Can we look for voluntary basically the entire front range have weed ordinances that require you to maintain your yard to some sort. Um but but several people seem surprised when we discuss that. Um and and then obviously, there's some other issues that um some people would call routine maintenance and others up to see if we can just try to educate folks that we um aren't instructing the staff to go out there and pick on people for no reason that we've had longstanding rules and laws in place that um are being enforced. And you know, that is a sit as boisterous about it for for not enforcing rules, not enforcing the standards that our city expects. And then if you do enforce them, um obviously, there'll be people upset uh for the enforcement of that. It, you know, I think it goes beyond weeds. It goes illegal buildings, illegal fences, things like that. That is also very important for people to understand um why those laws exist and why uh enforcement is continuous on those. Thank you.
So one of the girls.
I did think of one more thing. I received some communication from a resident this week with concern for um the speed of traffic on a hundred and twelfth between Chambers and Parkside now that it's on so quickly that they had to dive off of the road while they were walking along there, uh which resulted in an injury. And um just curious if we can put some sort of signage out there for speed limit. Um, maybe just anything to kind of um of a racetrack, it sounds like. So if we could do something to discourage speeding, that would be excellent. And um there was a request for a crosswalk as well. Um but I think we can probably take that up.
Any other council members wishing to make a report? Seeing none, I will make mine. It is very brief. I too was contacted by a representative for Oakwood Homes. We had a conversation this morning regarding the reverse setback. That is all I have to make a report. Seeing no other comments out there, we'll see you all Monday.